Good evening and welcome to this series of fiscal year 26 budget hearings hosted by the Boston School Committee and Superintendent Mary Skipper. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I will ask all of my colleagues to unmute and join me. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Because this is a virtual meeting, I will ask Ms. Pravix to please call the law.
Thank you Chair. Dr. Alkins, Mr. Cadet Hernandez, Mr. Ismail, Ms. Lima Barbosa,
Present.
Ms. Polanco Garcia, Mr. Tran,
Present.
Mr. O'Neil,
Present.
Ms. Robinson,
Present.
We have a call.
Thank you Ms. Pravix. Tonight's session is being shared live on Zoom. It will be posted on the school committee's webpage and on YouTube. Tonight's hearing documents are posted on the committee's webpage, bostonpublicschools.org/schoolcommittee under the March 5th meeting link. The documents have been translated into all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The committee is pleased to offer live simultaneous interpretation in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cape Verdean, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. The Zoom interpretation feature has been activated. Zoom participants should click the globe icon at the bottom of your screen to select a language preference. I want to remind everyone to please speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. I'd like to start tonight by sharing my gratitude for our mayor. Thank you for representing our values as a city and standing up for the needs of all Bostonians. You made us proud. During our February 26th meeting, we asked the superintendent to share a brief update on the community engagement process for the long-term facilities proposals. Superintendent, I now welcome your comments.
Wonderful. Thank you Chair. Good evening, everyone. So tonight, before we begin FY26 budget hearing, we'd like to just take a few minutes to provide an update on the district's community engagement work related to our long-term facilities proposals. This was requested specifically by Vice Chair O'Neil at the previous school committee meeting. Chief of Capital Planning Dell Stanislaus and Deputy Superintendent of Community and Family Advancement, Dr. Anna Tavares, are here tonight to provide more details about our recent outreach efforts and the district's 18-month planning cycle, as well as some historical data on past engagement timelines. So at this point, I will turn it over to Chief Stanislaus and to Dr. Tavares. Lieutenant and School Committee for the opportunity to present alongside my colleague Chief Stanislaus. I'm Dr. Anna Tavares, Deputy Superintendent of the Division of Family and Community Advancement. Our update is a follow-up request from Vice Chair O'Neil on the most recent community engagement related to the closure and merger proposals. This evening, we want to highlight our cross-division and cross-departmental collaboration and share what we have learned from communities. I first want to ground us in the mission statement of the Office of Family and Community Advancement, which states that each one of us has an important role in every student's success story. As you hear our update this evening, please know that Chief Stanislaus and I are one example of many of our cross-collaboration. I now turn to you, Chief.
I'm actually looking. I don't see Dell logged in yet.
Well, I can continue.
Why don't you continue?
You would like me to.
Dr. Tavares, yep. She might be on technical.
No worries. No. And School Committee members, please know that Chief Stanislaus and I, we've done this together and I'm happy to start off.
There's Dell. Okay, Dell, there we go. Okay, there you are.
Okay, perfect.
Great.
Sorry about that team. Good evening, everyone. Dell Stanislaus, Chief of Capital Planning. Thank you, Dr. Tavares. Let me project the slide. Seventeen. I am projecting this slide in one second. Can everyone see this slide?
We see your sign-in, Zoom sign-in page. We saw the clap with her a minute ago, but now it just says Zoom sign-in.
Dell, pull it up. Slide's up. Sorry for the technical difficulty.
Sorry about that team. On this slide, we have outlined the full timeline of engagements, starting from the initial announcement to impacted school communities. We understand that school closures are difficult news for communities. Schools are more than just buildings. There are places filled with memories, relationships, and history. At these meetings, we acknowledge the many emotions and challenges families and staff are facing. We emphasize that these tough decisions are made with the goal of creating better experiences for current and future students. The goal of this engagement is to make sure that families and staff understand the timeline and the options for themselves or their students. We know this is disruptive for those impacted, so our goal is to do everything we can to make the transitions for them as smooth as possible. While this slide captures what we have done so far, it is just the beginning of the work that will happen over the next 18 months. Next slide. In the past, BPS has followed an inconsistent timeline and process for school closures, ranging from four months to a multi-year process. Based on direct feedback from parents and staff, we believe the best timeline for transition is 18 months. This ensures a more thoughtful and supportive transition for students, families, and staff. A full year allows for a few things: a case management approach for all students with a particular individual focus on our students with disabilities and multilingual students to ensure there's no impact on their service delivery needs. These students and their families have designated support staffs within the Office of Specialized Services and the Office of Multicultural and Multilingual Education. Whether students are transitioning to a new school or emerged school, this timeline ensures they have enough time to prepare, adjust, and receive the necessary resources for a successful transition without leaving too much time for a school to destabilize. Passing it back to Deputy Superintendent Tavares.
Thank you Chief. Thank you Chief. The specific engagement you see listed is of community meetings and their attendees. These numbers are specific to community members. It does not include central office staff, interpreters, or support staff. Regardless of the number of people that attended the meeting, the capital planning team provided full presentation to everyone present. As you can see, it includes 106 community members and also small numbers of community members attended. Nonetheless, they left understanding the purpose and proposal for the long-term facility plan. Since the announcement, we have had numerous formal meetings, but what this slide does not cover is the numerous informal conversations we've also had with families and staff. Things like breakfast meetings, classroom conversations with students, and individual phone calls with parents and staff. This is much harder to capture, but equally as important. From these meetings, these are some of the positive key learnings we have heard. People have appreciated the multiple forms of engagement, access to languages and platforms. For example, families at The Lion appreciate that we held both virtual and in-person meetings. These meetings have also confirmed how incredible our school staff is. While they are processing their own transitions, they have prioritized creating space for students to process these changes and provide them with resources so they understand their options. We've also heard feedback about the 2030 vision from the broader community. Our families know that our district can and should be serving students better, and this affirms the process is the right direction for our schools. We are committed to increasing transparency, to fortify trust between the district and the communities we serve. Our intention is to share our criteria for selecting schools with the public as our partners in decision-making. Chief, I hand it over to you.
Thank you. Next slide. Actually, can you go back one slide? Sorry. While we've come a long way, we have also taken away some key learnings on how we can continue to improve this process for families, staffing, students. We could more clearly articulate the full 18-month timeline of activities so parents and teachers are assured they would receive the full one-on-one support and they understand they will have a significant voice in shaping the future of their school communities, particularly in the case of mergers. We have to be more conscious of timing for future proposals. Many of our families expressed that it would have been helpful to know of the proposal prior to the school choice season. We will follow up later this week with a memo with additional information on our engagement with communities. Next slide. A lot of what we shared tonight is very technical and those details matter. But before we move on, before we move on, we wanted to share some pictures. It's easy to talk about this in concept, but it is important to see how it plays out in the field. Here we have a picture of the Frederick tour with the families from the Winthrop and Clapp. Families were so excited about the new building. There's so much that the Frederick has that their current schools do not. One example of this is a little boy from the Clapp who screeched with delight when the tour guide said, "And next up, we'll walk to the gym." The little boy looked at his mom, eyes wide open, mouth dropped, and said, "A gym?" This seemingly small detail meant so much to him. This is what this work is all about. Thank you, and apologies for my tech glitch this evening.
So Chair, I think, I just want to check Dell and Dr. Tavares. You guys all set?
We're all set, Sue.
Great. So Chair, I think this was to really just give the committee an idea about the types of engagement that we've been involved in with the community, what led to sort of the recommendations and then working with the impacted communities on what would be helpful with transition, what types of questions emerge. We tried to do, I think as you saw, frequent levels of engagement, multiple meetings, different modalities of the meetings in a way to engage as many families, students, staff as possible. And even with that, there's lots of times that folks are reaching out to the team in Capital Planning or to OFCA, Dr. Tavares's division, to ask follow-up questions. So there's really a lot of ongoing dialogue that's happening within our communities relative to any of the changes that are being proposed.
Great. Yes. Thank you all. Thank you Superintendent Miss Stanislaus and Dr. Tavares for the update. The slide shared will be posted on the school committee's website, and we will not have a full conversation at this time as this is a budget hearing. However, we understand the long-term facilities plan may come up later in relationship to the budget. And we will now move on to tonight's presentation with the budget hearing. I want to, okay, as we begin, I want to briefly review the committee's budget process. On the first Wednesday in February, as outlined in the city charter, the superintendent presented her preliminary fiscal year 26 budget proposal to the committee. On February 13th, the committee held a budget hearing focused on school budgets. Tonight's hearing will focus on the central budget. The committee will hold the third and final hearing on March 20th at 5:30 PM, immediately followed by a regular school committee meeting at 6:30 PM. Over the course of the next week's, committee members are invited to ask questions and suggest modifications to budget items. The community is also invited to ask questions and provide feedback about the superintendent's recommended budget by offering live and testimony. The superintendent and her team will work diligently to respond to the committee members' questions in suggesting modifications, as well as clarify areas of concern before presenting a revised budget to the committee on March 20th. I'll now turn it over to the superintendent and her team for the central budget presentation. I'd like to remind everyone to please speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters.
Wonderful. So thank you Chair very much. It's great to be here before this committee for the second FY26 budget hearing, which this time, as Chair said, will be focused on central budget. As Chair also explained, my team presented a $1.58 billion FY26 preliminary Boston Public Schools budget in early February, and that for us officially kicks off the 2526 budget season. We identified along the way the high trends that at a very high level impact this year's decision-making. Just as a reminder, some of them included first full year without federal ESSR dollars, which as a reminder was the pandemic relief dollars, shifting enrollment trends from general education to multilingual learners and special education students, and the impact of inflation on maintenance and other costs. At our first budget hearing on February 13th, we reviewed our school's budget. We explained how we collaborate with school leaders to build out their budgets, what that process looks like, all the way back to when they get enrollment figures, and then how we identified cost savings that we then put funds back into the classroom with. We were also joined, just as a reminder, by several school leaders who explained how we use service mapping in the inclusion model to take a closer look at individual students' needs. Tonight, we're here to focus specifically on central office budget, and this for us contains four main components: our academics, the Office of Family and Community Engagement Advancement, which we call OFCA, Operations, and Superintendent's Office. The presentation tonight will be given by Chief Financial Officer Bloom, who everyone knows quite well, and he will be joined by Dr. Linda Chen, who everyone knows as well, Senior Deputy Superintendent of Academics, Dr. Sam DePina, who's our Deputy Superintendent of Operations, and Dr. Anna Tavares, who's just on the screen, who's our Deputy Superintendent of Community and Family Advancement. They are going to speak to each of their own areas of work, which encompass the budget. Chiefs of the Central Office Divisions are also here tonight and are ready to answer questions, and the deputies may pull them in to be able to give a fuller picture. As I've noted before, this year's budget honors our commitment to putting students first and in the center while also maximizing our previous investments, building that foundation out, and strengthening our proven programs and initiatives that are yielding outcome in the ways that we had hoped. Thanks to strong fiscal stewardship, fiscally responsible investments in strategic reductions and efficiencies, we have not lost focus or compromised our core mission in the delivery of this budget. And as members are aware, we applied a zero-based budget approach to our central budgets and asked each department to identify cost savings and anticipated increases. And you'll hear a bit more about that tonight. This budget represents a total of $53.4 million spending increase over FY25, which includes $22 million in new investments and $21 million in cost savings due to reductions, which include things like the closures, the grade configuration changes, and that's allowed us to reinvest a sum total of $43 million back into the schools. Additionally, I've asked our team to identify and earmark $5 million of further efficiencies in central office budgets that can also be reinvested in schools. These efficiencies come from across our divisions. They include operational areas such as transportation, facilities, reviews of contract spending and academics, reduction in positions with a focus on vacancies in particular, so those positions that have not been filled for some time. And tonight, our team will walk you through in their respective areas those reductions for the budget. As we also explained in the earlier budget presentation, the vast majority of our district's funding, 93%, is allocated to student services, including school budgets. The remaining 7% supports services that are budgeted centrally, such as transportation, specialized services like special education, facilities, and salary benefits, as well as services that the district is required to provide to non-BPS students. Smallest portion of the budget goes to central office administration, and that can also include constituent services, which provides resources to families, caregivers, and other BPS communities. In response to school committee members' advocacy, you're in receipt of the draft FY26 budget book, which provides, and this is draft, which provides great detail about this year's spending plan. And in his presentation, Chief Bloom will walk you through how to read it by sharing a few sample pages. And again, it's draft, and we update it as changes are made, recommendations are made, and numbers are altered. Book will be available to the public on the Budget Office webpage, bostonpublicschools.org/budget, all lowercase. This link is also available on the Boston School Committee's webpage under tonight's hearing. So at this point, Chair, I will turn it over to Chief Bloom and to the deputies to be able to further explain their respective areas. Chief Bloom?
Let me restart my intro off mute. Thank you Superintendent and good evening Chair and members of the school committee. I'm excited to be back in front of you today with members of our broader district team to discuss the impact of the FY26 proposed budget on central office. As always, I want to start tonight's presentation with a high-level summary of our FY26 budget proposal for those who may be joining the budget process for the first time. We are currently several months into what is almost a year-long budgeting process. This evening marks the third formal session of our school committee engagement around the budget, but this is a conversation that's been going on for the entirety of this school year. Our FY26 budget reflects our commitment to key school committee and district priorities that were reflected in the fall school committee retreat. These include accelerating academic performance, ensuring access for all students, and consistency in high-quality learning opportunities. As we work together to build a high-quality student experience, we are listening to the community. We've heard directly from the community through focus groups and listening sessions with over 500 community members, as well as a survey that yielded 9,000 responses to help us outline the four main elements that you see before you on this slide. This brings us to the superintendent's proposed budget for the FY2526 fiscal year. The proposed $53.4 million increase to the budget, 3.5%, is a budget that combines a commitment to fiscal responsibility with continued investment in our district priorities. In addition to the new funds from the city, we've identified $21 million in savings from the LTFP and Capacity Management, as well as a newly identified $5 million of the superintendent mentioned coming from central office budgets to be reinvested in schools. During our February 13th budget hearing, we went through $43 million in new investments in detail. These investments advance district priorities and show the beginnings of what we can build by reinvesting the savings from the difficult choices we're making with our long-term facilities plan. In that same hearing, we also discussed the school-based efficiencies we found. These were identified in two main ways. First, those savings from closures and reconfigurations under the LTFP. Second, classroom closures from under-enrolled programs. Every dollar saved from these in this matter was reinvested directly in schools. This brings us to the subject of tonight's hearing, our central office budgets. In the fall, we engaged in a zero-based budget process with our central office departments. Through that process, departments had to identify offsets for $10 to $15 million in programs and priorities that were funded using one-time revenues, primarily the tail end of ESSR. In addition, after the initial presentation of budget priorities in December, the superintendent listened to feedback from the school committee, school leaders, and school communities, and came back to our central office team in January and asked us to identify another $5 million of cuts to allow for additional investments in schools. Our deputy superintendents will be joining later in this presentation and will share more detail on these processes and the cuts. But before we go into that, I want to share some basics about our central budgets. As the superintendent mentioned earlier, over 90% of the district budget goes directly to programs at schools and with families. But about half of the budget actually lives on central office departments. This includes many things that are directly experienced by students and families, like transportation, facilities management, out-of-district services, and benefits for all our employees. We want to provide a little bit more detail of what goes into these items before we go in to talk through our divisions tonight. This slide provides a more detailed breakdown of central office budgets by our leadership structure. As you can see, the vast majority of resources are devoted to school services budgeted centrally. I will also note that the Office of the Superintendent includes multiple departments. It's not just the superintendent. I will also note, um, that the Office of the Superintendent includes multiple departments. It's not just the Superintendent's office. Um, so when you see, um, four million dollars here, that's, that's meant, that's multiple departments under the. Division of the Superintendent, not just the Superintendent's office, to be clear. Um, but academics includes things like all of our special education programming. Uh, that's on our central budgets, all such as special education-related services. And, uh, one-to-one paraprofessionals. Uh, it also includes our OMME budget for things like instructional coaching, curriculum resources. Our teaching and learning budget that provides all of our online, uh, learning tools and many more. We have our OFCA team, as the Superintendent mentioned earlier, under Dr. Tavarez. This includes things that you would traditionally think of, uh, like our family engagement work. But also a much more complex system of things like managing our welcome services and assignment. As well as partnerships with nonprofits across the city. Our operations team under Dr. DePina includes, uh, budgets like facilities. Um, finance, which includes all the benefits for the district, transportation, food services, and more. And then the Superintendent's office obviously includes the Superintendent herself. But also the Office of the Chief of Staff, Communications, the Office of Civil Rights. As I mentioned before, our central office distribution strategy was based on a zero-based but approach. We gave departments a blank page to start, which was a scary exercise for many. And really asked them to build up and outline the programs and services that they were hoping to offer in the upcoming year. And really think about the priority. That meant that some programs that were temporarily funded were moved over onto the permanent budget. And some programs that had been longstanding are now going to be reduced or eliminated. We also know, and we've gotten feedback from the School Committee and the public. That central office budgets can be hard to identify with and understand at the level of detail we're able to present in the meetings like this one. And so in service of that, I've finally been able to update this slide, very excited for this day to come, to say that we have presented the budget book. Not that it's coming, but it's actually here. Um, so our budget book is now published and it has more details and I'm going to just take a minute to walk through a little bit of what that looks like. But this outline walks through the main sections and for those of you following along at home in the budget book like I am. Um, you can go to the section on central office budgets that has one page per central office department. To learn more about what we are talking about tonight. Here's an example of the information that is on that page. We tried to balance giving information that people need to understand the work of the department. With not being overwhelming with the volume of information we gave. Even with that, this section of the book is fifty pages. But as you can see here, each page has a mission or vision for the department. And explains a little bit of the work they're trying to accomplish. We also listed anywhere from three to five priorities per department of what the work actually entails day to day. We then listed out the actual budget items that things are paid for. The hope here was that it could provide some detail and understanding of what goes into building a budget like this. For example, in the Athletics Office, you'll see a line for contracts and non-personnel. When we say school services budgeted centrally in the, uh, in this office. We're thinking about things like athletic trainer contracts, MIA fees, film. Supports for the interscholastic teams. All of our coaching stipends, for example, are included in this budget. The other thing is there's hundreds of thousand dollars for equipment and supplies. Things like uniforms, supplies for sports teams, athletic equipments, personal protective gear, and more. So, um, you have a page like this in your book for every department that has a budget in the BPS. And with that, I'll turn it over to my colleague, Dr. Linda Chen, to speak a little bit more about the Academics Division. Their priorities and the work they undertook this budget season.
Thank you, David. Good evening, School Committee members. Our core mission and the foundation of our budget request. Is to ensure the success of every single student in the Boston Public Schools. We have achieved this by providing our schools with the necessary resources and support to create robust learning environments. This includes a strong foundation in evidence-based literacy, which is essential for all students to engage meaningfully. In grade-level learning across all subjects. To realize this mission, we have identified some key priorities that will drive our budget allocations and strategic efforts. I'll share a few examples here this evening. First is to invest in high-quality instructional materials. This ensures our students have access to the best resources for learning. We will also provide our educators with professional learning opportunities. And individualized coaching, which will empower them to implement effective teaching strategies and meet the diverse needs of their students. Another priority is to cultivate strategic partnerships. By collaborating with colleges, businesses, and community organizations. We can expand learning opportunities, provide real-world experiences, and offer valuable mentorship for our students. We're also committed to expanding bilingual and multilingual educational supports and programming. Boston is a diverse city and we must ensure that all students, regardless of their language background, have the resources they need to thrive. Leveraging student-level data, dynamic digital learning environments, regional coaching supports, and professional development systems. This data-driven approach allows us to monitor student progress, identify areas for improvement, and tailor our support to meet individual needs. Some of these things you've seen in some of our transformation updates and so on. These priorities are not isolated initiatives, but rather interconnected strategies designed to create. A comprehensive and equitable educational experience for all Boston School students. The budget we are presenting reflects these priorities and our commitment to investing in the future of our students. On the next slide. I want to just provide some context for how we've looked at reductions. Excuse me just a minute. Building upon the mission and priorities outlined in the previous slide. This slide details our strategic approach to resource management. We've focused on maximizing the impact of every dollar allocated to academic support. We understand the importance of fiscal responsibility and we've actively pursued efficiencies. To ensure we are using taxpayer funds wisely. These efficiency measures have allowed us to reinvest in critical areas that directly support student learning and well-being. Some of these efficiencies include, I'll give a few examples here. One is we closely reviewed all of our vacancies as a team and deliberated on which vacancies and positions. We could eliminate for next year in alignment with our priorities. We also negotiated re- reduced pricing and adjusted scopes of contracted services. By reviewing our existing, um, contracts to identify areas where we could achieve savings without compromising quality. So some of us also looked at usage levels and so on of, of current resources. Um, we also, uh, again consolidate positions and work responsibilities to maximize our support for schools. This strategic restructuring has allowed us to streamline operations and ensure that resources are directed where they are needed most. We've conducted a thorough review of contract usage, stipend, and other expenses. Which allowed us to identify some redundancies and ensure that we are getting the best value for our investments. These efficiency efforts have resulted in significant cost savings, which you have then reinvested directly into programs that benefit our students. Some of these reinvestments include adaptive online learning resources. That provide personalized learning experiences for students, allowing them to progress at their own pace and receive targeted support. Another example is expanding academic mentoring and high-dose tutoring programs. That will provide individualized support to students who need extra help, ensuring they have the resources they need to succeed. Another example is a s- is strengthening our dual enrollment and early college programs. These programs provide students with the opportunity to earn college credits while still in high school. Increasing their access to post-secondary education. Enhancing secondary pathways in alternative education is another priority. Which ensures that all students have access to engaging in rel- and relevant learning opportunities regardless of their individual needs and interests. And one last example is also investing in community hub schools. These schools serve as centers of community support. Providing students and families with access to a range of resources and services to best support every learner. Thank you, and I now turn the time over to my colleague, Dr. Tavarez.
Thank you, Dr. Chen. Thank you for a second opportunity to provide a glimpse of the work led by the Division of Family and Community Advancement. School Committee members, I will not be able to share all of the incredible work that every department in the division is completing. However, I want to give you all an opportunity to have a glimpse of how. Our investments in the work that we lead to support our families is really. An exciting and, um, wonderful way for us to really focus. This evening, I want to first highlight our cross-division and cross-departmental collaboration. And as you can tell, I'm very excited. I want to share what we have learned from communities and how we're implementing the feedback we've received, including feedback from this body. I also want to ground us once again in the mission statement of the Office of Family and Community Advancement. And reiterate the importance of how our teamwork is critical. And we understand that each one of us has an important role in every student's success story. My fellow deputies, Dr. Chen and Dr. DePina, and I work in tandem to support our teams and colleagues. Across our divisions and among our departments. Next slide, please. We have responded to the priorities of our district to continuously improve our engagement process. By direct investments to support our families. Language capacity has been a key lever. We know access to resources is key. One example is our helpline. This is a trained team of multilingual staff. That connect families to resources and departments, as well as ensuring we close the loop on any supports needed. As of date, I am proud to share, we have supported over twenty-five. Thousand families this own. That is over ten thousand families more than this time last year. We will have almost doubled the support we provide to families by the end year. This is a data point that signals we are responding to the needs of our families and our community in real time. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share an example. And now, I welcome my colleague, Dr. DePina.
Thank you, Dr. Tavarez. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the School Committee and public joining us this evening. On behalf of the entire Operations Division, it is my pleasure to be here this evening to discuss our division. And our mission to create the conditions needed so that all our students can learn in a healthy, safe, and beautiful learning spaces. I want to take a minute to publicly thank everyone on the team for all the work that they've done in the assistance to develop in this budget. And the work we're going to continue to do on behalf of our students and families of the district. We do so through demonstrated priorities across all six of our operational departments. In capital planning, we continue to build the foundation for the future of Boston Public Schools. Through physical spaces that support learning and encompass all aspects of inclusion education, inclusive education. In operations, our Facilities Condition Assessment Dashboard, our FCA, that we refer to it as, allows us to make timely. Equitable decisions about repairs, replacements, and renovations in all of our school buildings. Our Transportation Department with the launch of the Zoom app, it provides us real-time transportation data. So we can safely track and transport all students to and from school safely. Finally, our Food and Nutritional Services Department is working every day to prioritize and prepare fresh meals in our cafeterias. Our Human Resources Team contributes to this innovation and transformation of teaching and learning. By supporting employees at every stage of their career. From recruitment to hiring and onboarding, professional growth, leadership development, and eventually retirement. In our Safety Services, um, yeah, in Safety Services, we continue to develop and implement plans. That create and ensure a safe and secure educational environment for all students and staff. Our Student Support Team, uh, takes a supportive and holistic approach in supporting our young people. This includes but is not limited to focusing on equity, academic success, social emotional well-being. And creating the conditions that will provide a total. Educational K-12 experience for our young people, both in school, after school, and during school vacations. Our Division of Data, Information, and Systems Improvement is a new department that brings together our IT. Data, Planning and La- Planning and Analysis Division, and Systems Improvement Teams. In service of consi- of, uh, of consistency in the use of available data and strategic decision-making across these departments. This team empowers data-driven decision-making and fosters a culture of continuous improvement in the district. They provide reliable, accessible, and secure data, streamline information flow. Optimize systems, facilitate cross-functional project management. And oversee the implementation of district initiatives to support student achievement. Enhance instructional practices, and strengthen operational effectiveness. Last but certainly not least, our Finance Team. Um, at, they accurately, um, provide financial and strategic support to schools and the community and central office teams. We aim to maximize, distribute, and safeguard the resources available to carry out the educational and support activities of the district. Again, I want to thank you all for your time. Um, next slide, please. Um, while keeping our sights laser-focused on operational priorities. We have continued to identify where operational efficiencies can also be realized. Our long-term facilities plans will continue to reap savings that would then be reinvested in our school communities. This year, this was realized with the closing of the Frederick, the West Zone. And the grade configurations at the Hernandez, Gardner, Haley, and Henigan. In the Transportation Department, to date, we have had one thousand students, yellow bus drivers, riders opt out of transportation. These opt-outs have led to one million dollars in savings in our transportation budget that can then be put back into schools for repurposing and programs. Facilities contracts are our biggest contracts in the district. A thorough review, as well as a stricter management of all of our contracts, led to additional efficiencies that could be realized. Reinvestment highlights in operations focus on strategic investments such as the following. Our Human Resources Team is undergoing a functional restructure. Based on the recommendations made by the Council of Great City Schools Review earlier this year. The core function and workflows of the Office of Human Resources will be reorganized and focused on three key areas. Recruitment and onboarding, employee support and retention, and exit transition with continuous improvement. In Student Support, we are making targeted programmatic investments in direct student support through mentorship. Career exploration, college and career opportunities, and telebehavioral health programs. Thanks again for your time this evening, and with that, I'll turn it back over to David Bloom. David?
Thank you, Sam.
As we close out our presentation tonight, I just wanted to take a moment to talk in a little bit more detail about the increased costs that I had mentioned earlier as part of our central office budget. These increased costs come into four main areas: health insurance, collective bargaining, out-of-district costs, and special education services. One thing I wanted to make sure to discuss with the committee tonight is we know that health insurance and collective bargaining are cost increases that we should expect every year as part of the inflationary cost of doing business. But we are in the midst of continued efforts to reduce cost for growth in as many items in the BPS budget as possible. For example, as we go to Carter's, grow the Carter School in its new building, we should be able to save money on out-of-district costs, and that's an item we're hoping to continue to reduce as the year goes go on. Finally, as we close out our presentation, I want to remind the public of where we are in our process. We'll be returning to the committee for a final hearing to review BPS's updated budget proposal on March 20th, before returning to a regular school committee meeting for a vote on the budget on March 26th. And with that, myself and the team look forward to answering your questions.
Thank you. I'll now open it up to questions and discussion from the committee. I'd like to remind everyone, all of my colleagues, about our agreed-upon norm that we each have five minutes per meeting, excuse me, per member, per round, not including district response. When there is one minute remaining, I've asked Ms. Parvex to give a reminder to the members. She will also notify you when your time is concluded. Right? We'd like to start. Ms. Lima Barbosa?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, everyone, for the presentation. I wish we had more time so you all could actually go in detail of all the great work that you all are doing. I know we've had opportunities as members to have one-on-one meetings to better understand where the investments are going, especially for the repurpose of the monies, dollars that we were able to save. I think for me, what I wanted to highlight more tonight is how important family engagement is. I think we've done some great investments there. Of course, we will always have to do more to become better, especially on being more creative and on how we are engaging with families in 2025 and beyond. I think there's a lot of the traditional practices that are still very important on how we're communicating with them. But there are best practices that other industries are utilizing to engage with their target audience. And for me, especially with the climate of our country right now, there's so much more misinformation going out when we think about particular communities that need our services. I think about even walking to welcome centers, navigating all the different testing that they have to practice. So I know we've expanded staff in East Boston. I know we've made some changes there, but I would love to challenge this district to really think about not just expanding the existing sites, but creating other sites in our neighborhoods, especially when it comes to testing. Because some of them can go and register, for example, in Dorchester, but then still have to go do testing in Roxbury. So how do we become a little bit more accessible to some of our communities? So it's not a logistical nightmare. Another thing I wanted to point out, Soup, and I know some folks on your team have had this conversation, I've had this conversation briefly with the city on how we can really think about Bowling Center having more of a presence of the district. And I think a lot about the Welcome Center. I think it's concerning that our lobby or lounge area per se is not as, not that it needs to be private, but I would love, you know, if all your cubicles are full, I appreciate the flexibility of staff coming out and really meeting them out. But some parents don't want to talk about their family business out, especially if it's a family that requires some sort of language support, for example, or have things that are a little bit more private that they want to share. We do have neighbors and the external partners that are neighbors in the building that also do amazing work in the community. I want to name that. I'm not asking at all for folks to be displaced, but would love to learn more. And I know that's a conversation with the city, it's not just with the district, and I want to acknowledge that as well. But we have to make investments in our city, in our services, our constituent services. It's not just about, of course, our buildings and our schools, our teachers and educators. Those are important, but you got to think about the moment that a family wants to register in the district. And our welcome centers, I think there's a lot of potential there. There's a lot of work that's already being done. But I think we need to think a little bit outside of our box and think about expanding beyond what we already have. Of course, they need more support. We need to continue to sustain and make sure our staff is prepared. But families are not stopping to come to Boston. And our mayor is making that very clear that we want to make sure our city is safe so we can continue to receive families, not only from outside the country,
One minute.
Other states. I don't have a particular question, at least for this round, but I really wanted to talk about seeing more investments, and I'm using Welcome Center just as an example, but any department that really serves that face direct service with a student outside of the academic support. Because I think we're doing some progress, but I would love to see if we're cutting or we're saving in this area. Let's say next year we come and it's like the top two of the more invested areas in the district's budget. So I'll stop there. If anybody has any comments, just a few thought processes on how, where we landed at this for this conversation, but I'll have more questions for the next round.
Great. So I know Dr. Tavaris is still trying to figure out her tech. We seem to be having tech bad luck tonight. But I, so, I got you. So I mean, I think, you know, as we've talked, right, we love your thinking, we loved the feedback that you gave when you came and saw the Welcome Center. And I think we've started those conversations about the assessment piece because it is very true that we need to streamline the assessment. There's also a lot of time that parents have while they're waiting at the engagements at the Welcome Center. And so how can we use that to our ability? But the other thing that I really appreciate that I think Dr. Tavaris is attempting to do with the team is create those moments of family engagement as we're doing different initiatives. So whether that's long-term facilities, and as Dell and Anna co-presented, the teams working together there, whether it's inclusion and helping a parent understand and become engaged with the IEP and/or the inclusion plan and options for their student. You know, whether it's, you know, quarry and student support and actually having many of the events where the whole family comes to it. There's so many different opportunities we have to bring families into our schools, into our centers, like wherever we're doing the activities. So in addition to the Welcome Center and that focus and evolution, we also need to be thinking about what does that look like throughout the organization? And how can we make sure OFCA is the fabric of the organization? Dr. Tavaris, did you have other things you wanted to?
Yes, Superintendent, I better jump in before the Wi-Fi betrays me again. One of the platforms, and remember, Barbosa, I love that you're pushing this conversation for more details. So as you know, Acela, that we are now referring to as Great Starts, is actually a platform that's going to allow families to be able to do their entire application online with support of a registration specialist in their first language, and it's going to accelerate the process. And that's really exciting. Another point of technology that's really critical and important for this body to know, and I'm hopefully going to be able to demonstrate at one of our school committees, is the Translate Live. So that's the device that many of you may have heard of, and I know a few of the committee members actually got to see it working, that every single main office across our schools in the district have access to any family with any language as a primary language can walk into our building. And even if the staff may not have that language capacity in the building, this device allows us to simultaneously communicate with families in real time. And that's huge and revolutionary. And of course, having the devices at the school is step one. Now, really being able to continuously train folks on how to use the device and then keeping track with the device of what schools are using, what languages where, is data that we're super excited to begin collecting in this school year.
Thank you. I like the application being online. Just wanted, I'm just curious if you all are also thinking about having, you know, your team at particular events or sites with tablets where if a family comes around, they're like, hey, I want to do it now. So things like that, I'm sure you all are thinking about. But thank you so much for sharing a little bit more. I'll have follow-up questions in the next round.
Remember, Barbosa, we don't just think about it, we actually do it.
Right.
So, yeah, we do pop-ups often. And to your point earlier, how can we access the opportunity to have families really engage with welcome services? I mean, even this past Saturday, our welcome service specialists were at the Lila Frederick welcoming the Clapp and Winthrop families that were visiting the school. So I think it's really important for this body to understand that these teams are out in the community all the time. And it's critical because sometimes it's one or two or three people, you know. Our director happened to be the one, our exec director happened to be Sonia, who was out there this past Saturday. But, and they rotate among the teams, so maybe two or three people. But they're out there, and they're out there almost every single weekend, every single night.
Thank you. Dr. Hawkins?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I think one thing I had asked previously was also, it would be helpful for us to see some trend data just over the past few years, how central office investments have changed over the past five years. And so I think just to really show how it's been reinvested over the course of time, and I think that's also good for the public to see. Because I know that that's been something that has been stated by the public and schools as well. So I think that would also be helpful. And then, I'm actually curious about if you're using some of these reinvestments. It's not just having the money, but it's how you're thinking about using it. I'm really curious on like experimental strategies that you might be thinking about with teach, teacher-staff and recruiting, recruiting and retention practices, like et cetera. If you're really thinking about how, like, how do we do make more or try to just be creative, I think, you know, to echo the comments of my fellow committee member. But I'm really curious about like those things.
So I certainly can answer that. Deputy Depina, would you like Chief Canty to come on?
Yes, I was just about to go there. Move on off, but Chief Canty can speak to that. Committee member Hawkins. Francis?
Good evening. So we are always looking at ways, obviously, to maximize the way we use our recruitment dollars and how the recruitment dollars impact our our teacher retention or like what impact, like how we're using the dollars. What are the outcomes of those dollars? Those are things that we're always looking at. This year, we've been really strategic about the way we are we are looking at what the outcomes are are going to look like. We, right now, are following it a little bit more than they had in the previous years. I think it's, we have been more strategic in trying to figure out if we, because we even like, we're looking at like, if we attend a fair or if we attend a certain fair, what are the outcomes of those fairs? Do we get, how many people do we get from those fairs? So we are looking at those things now. I just want to caution that I don't know what the data looked like prior. I know now that these are things that like, I am very much focused on to see what the outcomes are of the things we attend. If something is not yielding anything, if we're attending like twenty fairs, but you know, when we go to these fairs, we're not getting the candidates, does it really, is that an investment that the district needs to make? Or like, how do we like realign our strategies to make sure that it makes sense for us? So those are things that we are looking at. And when you talk about retention, we are also looking at that, like, we, you know, the district. One thing that like, we are thinking about investing in is like, really looking at like, the surveys that we do when people are exiting the district and seeing what, like, what is the data really saying and what are we seeing? And how do we, what investments can we make to make sure that, like, we invest in these things that we're seeing from this data? So we are, I, this is a roundabout way to say to you that, like, we are being more strategic this year at looking at the dollars to make sure that it makes sense. And we're being very intentional about it this year.
And the last thing I'll add is that we're also looking at, in our reorganization, shifting to a real case management model for retention of staff. So I don't know if you want to speak a little bit more about that, Chief Canty?
Yes. So one of the things at the Council of Great City School, the audit that we did of OHR, it realigned the work for us. And one of the things that we, recruitment and staffing wasn't really connected together the way, just the way that the office was structured. And one of the, one of the recommendation was for us to realign those two groups together and seeing like, and now we can really manage like from the staffing point and the, like, understanding what school leaders need. And then so that we can then go out and make those recruitment efforts. So there are some realigning that's happening that's gonna, we're hoping will yield some better data as to how for us to like really spend those dollars and see, and really see benefits of how those dollars are gonna are gonna either, you know, really speak to what we were looking to do, like, what does strategic staffing and recruitment look like? Because it's something that we haven't been doing. So I'm hoping maybe by next year, we'll have a better data point and that we'll be able to talk to you about some of the outcome of that realignment and how it's working.
Yeah, I think this was why we undertook, Dr. Hawkins, the Council of Great City Schools for OHC at this time. I also think that the hiring and recruitment in cultivation and retention has shifted post-pandemic and post-Esar, where you see, for instance, waivers which were plentiful and allowed districts to be like really nimble with hiring. Things have scaled back considerably. So when we hire somebody, we have to think about how if that person's coming in and needs to work on a license and they're under a waiver, what are the steps we need to take in a very short amount of time to get that person licensed? So it's definitely causing us, in a positive way, to be much more efficient and strategic and make sure that as Sam began sort of with the Council of Great City Schools, there's deliberate strategy around the recruitment piece and data collection. There's deliberate around the cultivation and development, and then deliberate around the retention. We need all of that. So it's a great, it's a great question and one that is definitely represented in our budget, both in the Council of Great City Schools findings and then in the reorg.
Thank you. And I guess also as a follow-up, just with the reinvestments, could you provide a little bit more rationale on like, how you, how you're deciding of the money that you're now figuring, we can now reinvest this? Like, how are you deciding it goes to alternative ed programming or non-personnel support? Could you just give a little bit more insight as to how you all are doing? I don't think it's like a application phase where schools say, hey, there's this much money, can we have? I think it's a little bit more nuanced than that, but I'd love to hear a little bit more.
Well, I think like, going back to thinking about students first and students in the center, that was really the north star for us of making sure like, most of what we're reinvesting is being directed towards schools and being directed toward direct supports for students. It's also building on the foundation of what we've laid that aligns with our It's also building on the foundation of what we've laid that aligns with our priorities and the goals. That the school committee set forward. All the deputies and the chiefs have those. And in their decision making, they're looking at outcomes to say, how do those align? Uh, and then from an efficiency standpoint, we're just looking at. How do we make further investment in areas that are going to yield greater efficiency going forward? So like a good example of that was Zoom and the technology with transportation. That was an initial cost, both of training and people and technology. But we know that through ridership identification, transparency to parents, uh. O T P improvements, like all of those things are ways that that gave back further efficiencies. That's really the strategy that we're using in this, that the deputies and the chiefs have kind of undertaken. And Chief Blue, I don't know if there's anything else you want to add?
Well, the, the thing I'm just going to add is I think many of these items. Um, if you think about the five million dollars of central reduction that's being reinvested in schools. These were primarily things that the superintendent and our leadership team heard. Both from the committee when we were discussing the initial ideas in, in December, but also from school leaders. So. In the second Monday in December, we gave school leaders the budget that for their schools, right? And then we had school leader P D. And they all came together and it was a great opportunity to listen for sort of feedback. And then as we engaged with school site councils at schools, there was more community feedback that came in. And what that led to was, um, I think it's roughly four main categories of things. There might be a fifth as I count through them. That we're investing in. So for example, some additional libraries, um, is, is one example. Um, another example was some additional in-school swim programs that we hadn't originally been planning on. And then so sort of the way to think about how it worked is. The superintendent identified the priorities with the deputies for us. And then individual members of our teams worked to establish criteria. For what the investments were inside that area. So for example, for high schools and investment in high schools. That was a later breaking investment, right? Not in the original. What we sent to you, not, not what we originally proposed in December as our main priorities. And the high school team working in collaboration with school leaders and others put together a proposal for that. So I think each sort of bucket had its own sort of equity based process it went through to determine. The resources that went there are then flowing down to the school level. And we'll be providing in the, the memo we give you with the updated budget. We'll be providing sort of some of the details of where those investments are going.
Right, that's okay. So that like, like that's helpful. And so I think particularly like then what I'm getting at is, is that. If each of these processes has their own sort of equity process that they're using to figure out. What the investment should be presumably in all of this, there's also. Uh, documentation that we can look at or review with regard to like. How each program might be using the racial equity tool, right? To see like, what's the, what's the data? That's going to create this ask for us. So I just want to make sure that like, we have all of that rationale. Um, because I think that's one of the things that gets lost particularly for families where it's just like, oh yeah, like how did you choose adaptive online learning? How did you choose like this, right? And so I think it's really. Really nailing down as grand, and I know you all are doing it. I trust that you all are doing it. Uh, but the level of like the, the granularity that's, that's, that's there for, for, for us to like look at and, and review.
Super helpful. We can certainly work on points line together for you on that.
Mr. Tron?
Uh. Thank you for presenting a very thorough. Budget, uh, uh, budget and, um. I do appreciate the fact that, um. A lot of, uh, considerable, uh, consideration had already been. Uh, put in to the process. In your reinvestment. So to, uh, Mary Skipper, you get high mark from me for, for the next evaluation, given the fact that you. Surround yourself with a very, very competent staff, especially regarding, uh. Budget. Um. My question, or as a matter, as a matter of fact, my, my request is. Kinda akin to what, uh, member Hawkins mentioned, but it is more to what, um. Two specific programs that you. Uh, decide to, um, put extra dollar in the reinvestment. Uh, the first one is the bilingual program and the second one is the, um. Uh, student with disability, uh, in the inclusion process. Um, the request is this, of course. When. When we decide to add additional money into. Areas that we think needs improvement. Um. The two areas that I just mentioned, I believe that, you know, um, the staff and you have already. Uh, uh, seen issues that need to be improved. The request is very simple. Um, I like to see, I would like to receive data. Supporting. The areas, the specific areas, the, the specific issues in those two programs. That the additional. Uh, reinvestment help improve. Uh, be it students' achievement, um, closing the educational gap or whatever. I, I like to. To receive information, data that would. Prove to us that the, that, at least to me, that the, um, additional investment does help. So in another word, maybe I'm, I'm looking for some sort of a detail rather than say, okay, here, here's another. One million dollar to your school and I want you to do. Uh, to, to use it in your, um. Uh, in your program, in your inclusion program involving students with disability. And then, you know, once you give that, you wash your hand and it's up to the. The, the, um, principal to decide how, how to do with it. I'd like to see some, you know, some, some, some nexus, some details. How, I'm not questioning their, their profession, their, their profession. I'm not questioning their, their experience. But I like to see data showing the areas that the, the, the money help. Given the fact that these two areas have been. Um, for the last forty years or so, because the last time I got involved with, with, with school was more than forty years ago. It has always been there and. The, the inclusion talk has al- always been there as well. But here we are, uh, we, we continue to talk about it. I like to see some, some improvement. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think, um. As part, as we sort of, this is all, this feedback is really helpful as we think about what materials to provide you all with. Um, next week as we give our updated budget materials and the details, I think. Uh, remember Tron, to your point, we can, we can give some information about the data we used in the review process. For inclusive ed allocations. That's certainly something we can provide.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neil?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the team to presenting. Mr. Bloom, um. As I start talking, would you just please pull back up your presentation and go to the slide about the reinvestment? That show, I, I think it was a slide that showed a list of the reinvestments. You just happened to go to that page very quickly. So it was a. I want to focus on it a little bit. Was it, it was before, it was before this?
This one?
Yes, thank you. So, uh, first of all, thank you for the budget book and I look forward to going through it. And of course it. Will raise loads of questions that will inundate you with. Um, and I'm appreciative of the details on both the cuts to central that were made and the reinvestment such as this. I'm just reading through it. I have had the opportunity to reach out to a number of school leaders across the district just to get. You know, one-on-one thoughts about how, uh, the budget is impacting them. The vast majority are fine. They've had to make some adjustments, uh, but they certainly get it and. Knowing that it's coming down off of Esser, the guidance that, uh, your team and the superintendent has been giving them. The past couple of years is very much appreciated. So. Um, all in, I do get a good report. I will say. Superintendent, there is the natural, and you spend so much time in schools yourself, it will not surprise you to hear. That there is the natural hesitation of what is coming to the schools. And is it being spent as much as possible? And are there inefficiences, inefficiencies in central or bowling? And so hearing that there are investments that are going back into the schools, these, these couple of slides are extremely helpful. The devil is obviously in the details, as they say. And. So when we talk about, um, thank you, Mr. Bloom for that, you can, you can take that down. Um, when we talk about each of the areas and how they are. Um, providing services to the schools. That is not under school leaders' control. I'm curious, Superintendent, this may be a question for you. It, it may be for Office of Human Capital. It may be for the individual area heads. How do we ensure that those doing those roles?
Yeah.
Are doing it as effectively and efficiently and as beneficial to the schools? You know, we, we now with the regional structure, there's a lot of liaisons as an example. How, how are we training and coaching and evaluating the liaisons? Are we getting input from school leaders on that? You know, and, and this could be in academics, it could be in special ed, it could be in early literacy. Well, early literacy is part of that, obviously. It's. We have a bunch of liaisons. How do we ensure that they're all? Um, adding positively to the schools that they're working with?
Yeah.
Because otherwise we run the risk that school leaders are like, hey, we're spending a bunch of money on this. They're not adding value. I'd rather have an extra X Y Z.
Yeah.
How do you balance that, Superintendent?
Yeah. So this is, it's a really, it's a, it's a, it's a interesting and good question, um, Chair, Vice Chair O'Neil, because. There's, you know, there's, there's lots of, um, there's lots of positive aspects of the regional model. Uh, because it does allow you to break the work down more concretely and. Um, get to the particular issues that schools and school leaders are facing. Uh, however, there are layers to it and anytime you have layers, you can get degrading through the layers of. Uh, effectiveness, right? And so, um, I think what we've been doing is a couple of things. We have a leader cabinet. Um, and that leader cabinet is very good at representing. Um, their peers, they're very honest. We have very good dialogue. Um, I meet with them monthly, as does the team. And so particular issues will come up there. Um, but then also we're evolving our survey, you know, so the. One of the questions in the survey is around central impact. Um, and what we've come to see is. The aggregate question was really good for showing us there was room to grow. But we need to go to the individual department and liaisons to figure out where there's breakdown. Sometimes that breakdown can be, um, individual needs more training or is very new, uh, or might not be effective. Um, sometimes, uh, it can be the structure that, um, you know, we have. We've added liaisons in from the different departments and it can be that sometimes. Uh, a particular department would be better structured into, uh, talking and working with the school leaders rather than in the actual regional network. So it can be sort of a individual issue or it can be, uh, a departmental issue. And that's the next step of sort of peeling back the survey data to sort of look at that as we refine the regional network. Um, but it is a balance, right? It is a balance because in any of the communication, it's the school leader. Uh, and or the leadership team at the school, it's the liaison, it's the department they represent. Uh, and a, a good example I'll give you is that. Sometimes the answer is not what a leader wants, right? I was certainly in this situation in my leadership. Where I would put in for facilities that I felt were extremely important that needed to get fixed at that moment. But back at facilities, they're dealing with a hundred and nineteen schools and they're dealing with a range of safety to cosmetic. And so sometimes the answer is we can't do that. And for the school leader, that can be really hard when there's several of those. And they don't understand that it's because the broader, the resources we have and what we're able to do. Doesn't match all of the different issues that leaders might bring. So. This is an area that we're spending a lot of time with school leaders to unpack. Because to me, it is the magic of the regional network to get it working fully and as a team. Uh, so.
I, I hear what you're saying. It's, you know, it's great that we have the regional network, you know, I'm a huge supporter of it and it's great that we have the liaisons. I think it's. A little challenging because the regional superintendents don't oversee, they don't evaluate, they don't coach, they don't train. The liaisons, because they were assigned from another department to work with them, right?
Correct.
The schools that they visit, those school leaders don't evaluate, they don't train. The liaisons because. So it would be interesting to hear how, and you can pick any department that has liaisons. I'm thinking more on the academic and special ed side, et cetera. That they, how they approach. Training and coaching and evaluating and getting feedback from both the regional heads and the school leaders who have these people in their buildings. And actually go out and visit schools with them to, right? It's like, I, I've been with you in schools where you're. Evaluating teachers by standing in the back of the room and you're evaluating the school leader as you walk around. There's no better way to evaluate how a liaison is doing. Than being in schools with them. So I'm just, I'm intrigued. I, and I only bring it up in the budget context because. It does impact perception on budget and is central adding value or is it taking away?
Yeah, no, a hundred percent. And I do think that the construct of these slides. Is intended to make very clear where the dollars are going and the direction that they're flowing. But dollars don't always lead to impact and that's where getting the additional data. Uh, the regional networks are actually at that point where they do their team meetings. They often do it in the school, they visit the schools with the liaisons and it's a process. And I think the survey data can be helpful in accountability and that's kind of this next layer that we're taking on.
Yeah, we just need to really show every dollar we're spending.
That's right.
Is adding value and helping us academically, et cetera, at the school, school level. I'll pause, Madam Chair, because my five minutes are up. Um, so I'll defer it to you and other members and. Would love to have one more opportunity to ask questions.
Okay. Um, we'll go back around and then I'll speak at the end. Ms. Lima Barbosa, did you have your hand raised for a second? Round? No, no, I'm also, thank you. Dr. Hawkins? Back to you, Mr. O'Neil.
Thank you. I just, um, one item, you know, when we look at centrally is transportation because it is such a huge item and. And back to you, Mr. Bloom, you, you mentioned two things that caught my ear. One is. I think it was an eight million dollar increase because of the contracts and I'm glad we, um, reached, uh. Um, a collective bargaining agreement there, uh, actually two. And we were able to increase hiring particularly on monitors. So. But that was an increased cost. You also mentioned a million in savings because, or maybe, um, Dr. DePina did. A million in savings by going through and having people, you know, opt out. I just, could you spend a, a bit more time? I don't know if you, if it's possible for you, Mr. Bloom, to pull up the budget book and. Have a look at the transportation page, but it's such a key line item for us and it attracts so much attention. Could we just talk about transportation a bit more and, and where we see that heading and.
Yeah.
Three D F ideas we're working on to continue to find savings there as, as we improve service?
Wow, I really promise to everyone else on the committee, I did not plant that question. Um, despite.
Not in the slightest because I thought of it looking at you.
Despite the amount of joy it just brought me, um, and I really appreciate it. So. Let me go to our beautiful budget book. Much thanks to our communications team. Um, actually, let's see here if I can do it this way. Yeah, look at the fine works. Um. So let's get, sorry, just have to hide the, um. View screen here. So. Here's our transportation. Department budget and their priorities. Um, and then you can see. Um, and then you can see the vast majority of the money, and we will fix the formatting issue there. Um, is going into contracts and non-personnel, and that's because our contract with our, um, with Transdev is the is the vast majority of of our funding. Um, I think we are cautiously optimistic about the savings we're going to accrue. Um. From the transportation office, so, oops, sorry. Um, and I think, you know, we've taken a million dollars, as Dr. DePina mentioned so far, but, uh, working together with our transportation office, our team is pretty optimistic about the future of of our cost management. And so I think, you know, we really do hope that each year going forward, we're going to be bringing you more and more identified cost savings um, going forward.
But if I read that properly, transportation with Transdev Nexia was costing us a hundred fifty seven million?
Um, that line also includes, um, so it's a hundred and fifty seven million in contracts. But that also, that includes a combination of Transdev. Um, it's also our contracted services with the MBTA for T passes.
Okay.
And it's our contracted services with other providers who do out of district. Um, as well as some smaller things like, um, it's all of our, uh, vehicle insurance, right? It's sort of all the contracts for the department. We can certainly give you um, an updated estimate for Transdev itself as well.
But the fact is, we're spending a hundred fifty seven million to transport all of our students on a combination of school buses, MBTA. You know, private services for out of district, et cetera, including you mentioned in one of the slides. Out of district transportation, homeless youth who are outside the city, right, to come back into BPS?
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah, so let me jump, I'm gonna jump into this one. Um, so I actually am very optimistic. Um, as I usually am, uh, but the 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 reason is because we can see some of the drivers to the cost that we can actually influence. I think, um, when we talk about the long-term facilities plan and we're talking about the footprint of the district changing and bringing high-quality seats closer to students. What we're also talking about is less time sitting on buses. And the fewer students we have sitting on buses for the shorter amount of time, the shorter the routes, the less buses you need. And the less overhead that you have. So long-term facilities is one big solution to some of this. The other is the inclusion model. And that is parents and students having more choice than they've ever had to be able to choose schools close to, in their region and closer to their homes. Uh, when previously they might have had to leave the area that they live and go across the city to access a self-contained classroom or a more restrictive classroom than previously. Those are two that are, you know, relative to long-term facilities and inclusion, we're actively working on. And we can see in, um, both the closures and consolidations that happened last year and the ones that are being proposed right now, where there's real time savings for kids not sitting on buses. And that, in fact, starts to look at the whole ecosystem of how we bus. Uh, and it also opens up opportunities for bus in other ways, like athletics and enrichment and things that we don't always have the actual bus capacity to deliver. Um, the other is that we're doing a lot of hard work with the charters. Um, because as you know, in Massachusetts, we have to bus charter students and, uh, in some cases parochial students. And so we're working hard to talk very concretely with with our charter peers around um, how to be more efficient with the tiering and having them aligned to our tiers. Which again shrinks routes. Um, uh, and, uh, uh, also, um, there is within special education, um, you know, students that have that uh, initially get door-to-door or initially get corner-to-corner. Part of the IEP process is revisiting a transportation goal every year.
Yeah.
That is just part of good practice in the IEP to become more independent and least restrictive. Um, so we're actually working within special education around that reminder and that training, um, so that it isn't just a, every year you roll forward the same number of door-to-door students or the same number of corner-to-corner, but it's actually a thoughtful piece of the IEP as to what is gonna best benefit that student. Um, out of districts is another one. Where I think as we develop the high-quality programming that parents are looking for and they can keep their kids in the BPS, that's gonna cut down on the number of students required to go out of district to get those services. And it's also, you know, with the out-of-district uh, transportation, uh, uh, also, uh, again, the number of buses that we have and how those routes are done. Those are all opportunities to be able to better align, be more efficient, and ultimately have a better experience for students and families using the bus system. On-time percentage improves, uh, and, uh, savings gets accrued. So I think this is an area that we're gonna see a lot of development over the next several years. Uh, that isn't just about the money, but it's also about the experience.
Right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Um, I have a couple of questions, and many of my questions have been answered, and again, I want to thank you, Mr. Bloom, very much for the, um, Budget Book, and I look forward to spending a lot of time with it. Um, a couple of things, um. I've been interested a lot in the regional model that we have these nine regions. And in my mind, sometimes I think of them as sort of being their own self-contained school districts. They're about as big as many of the smaller districts around the Commonwealth. Has there ever been any thought given to treating them like you know, Region One or Region whatever really is self-contained and thinking about what what's available there for China? Um, you know, are the kids who go to those schools, if they, you know, is it neighborhood-based enough that you could begin to look and and figure out? You know, what are the investments that we've made? How strong are they? Where are they weak? How do we, how do we make them better so that we're not transporting people outside of them? You know, what else needs to be contained inside that regional model that allows it to become much more self-sufficient?
Uh, so so Chair, I think these are, these are good points and actually kind of underpins why the regional model is so important. We want to strengthen each of the regions. Not not just in the K six, K eight side, but also high schools.
The high school.
That we're making sure the secondary picture is one where a student can choose a high school that's close to them, that they don't have to take the MBTA across town, you know, an hour or more. Because it has the early college, it has career, a set of career connections, choices. Uh, it has the athletics opportunities that they want. You know, this is as we think about the footprint. Um, why it is important to have slightly larger schools that can offer a lot more for the students. Uh, so I think you're right. I think the the reason we are broken up into the regions is both from a support standpoint, but also that as this evolves, those high-quality options are right there, and students don't need to rely on transportation to go to go across the city.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the the other question I have regarding transportation, I know we must provide transportation for the charters, et cetera. But it feels like the district is always put in a position of having to respond to what somebody wants. I mean, has it ever, has the district ever or transportation ever proposed back to charters? Here would be the best way. You could be organized so that we could actually get you all to school on time and get our own. I mean, have we suggested back, um, changes in school start times, et cetera? Um, because the city is the city. Um, there's gonna be traffic, et cetera, but by now, you know, I'm sure that there's someone that knows, you know, if this school started fifteen minutes later, or that one started twenty minutes earlier or whatever, we could actually get kids to schools. Where are those kinds of conversations happening?
Yeah, if I can answer, yes, so the team has constantly been communicating with, um, with our charter colleagues and parochial colleagues. And we have, uh, proposed those options and, um, try to make it, um, work for everyone, but unfortunately, we can't mandate those changes. So to the extent possible, um, where charters could, uh, or privates have met us halfway, we've been able to accommodate and make those changes, but for the most part, we haven't really been able to move the needle so much because they each have their different nuances around when they start and when they end in their after program. But we have tried, the short answer is we can't really mandate it. I know, Dan, you want to add anything to that, but I'll defer to Dan if he wants to, uh, say more.
Hi, Dr. DePina. Thank you, uh, everyone. I had Dan Rosengard, Executive Director of Transportation. I think, uh, Dr. DePina hit it pretty spot on. We we have done that analysis. We have, uh, you know, we are constantly working with all of the charter schools and um, you know, in some cases, we've been able to work with schools and shift their bus time slightly to to align them to the three BPS tiers, but, you know, as as Dr. DePina said, we can't mandate it, and there are still, um, you know, a number of charter schools who are not aligned that, you know, we're still working with them to to see what we can do.
Yeah, we have a, we have a compact chair that, um, we meet with the the leaders of the charters and Catholic schools. Um, and we've done a lot of, I think, really good work, um, in a number of areas of good collaborative work. Um, and so we have another meeting coming up specifically about the transportation to have a further conversation. Because I think we get to a certain point where we have to get kind of better in full cooperation. It will also help the charters, right? Because it helps ensure that transportation can be reliable and on time, right, and that kids aren't sitting on buses for over an hour. So um, there's lots of reasons why it makes sense. The issue of changing start times is, um, it's sort of like changing schedules in general. It's a lightning rod that most people don't like because parents orient around those schedules. Teaching childcare orient around those schedules, so we have to enter it with and I think I'm gonna compliment Sam and Dan on this, because I think um, we've done several now over the last couple of years. Um, and it's been very well, because we we were able to give a lot of notice. But I think at this point, we sort of have to have that deeper conversation with our charter colleagues so that they do understand. Uh, you know, what's at stake.
Yeah, because I mean, the district takes the criticism all the time of not getting kids able to be getting kids to school on time, and it feels like we've got to utilize every strategy possible um, to make that possible, and particularly, we've got to do that in collaboration with others, and hopefully, again, there will be some cost savings coming back our way when we can do that. Um, congratulations on getting a thousand families to step up to recognize whether they're using the services or not. Um, you know, every penny saved gets to go, um, to something else. Um. Within the budget book, and again, I haven't taken a closer look, but, um, you know, I've seen on that slide when we looked at the investments, you would say six million dollars in new classrooms. What kind is is what specifically would that kind of investment entail?
Sure, um, I can answer that. So the six million dollars in new classrooms is a a variety of different um, things. So one very common example is we have some programs for students with disabilities in substantially separate settings that are growing. Um, you know, maybe they started a couple of years ago in K zero, K one, and now they're adding a second or third classroom um, to the grade. The other thing, um, sorry. The other thing we're looking at is just tracking enrollment overall. So there are some cases where a school maybe used to consolidate their strands. So maybe in in the case, the case of a K six, maybe in fourth or fifth grade, their numbers didn't support a second homeroom. But now they're opening up homes.
Okay.
So those are the types of things that new classrooms support. Um, and then the program expansions, which is another, was another item there, that could be things like opening up a new dual-language or newcomer program. Um. Expanding the eighth grade for the Munis for its expansion to seven twelve. Um, EMK's growth in their new partnership with Weber and things like that.
Yeah. So I know this is a lot to ask, and I haven't looked at the budget book in depth enough to see that. Would we be able to tell as we were reading through the the budget book, two things? Some places where their new investments are made, so like I could understand where those new classrooms are happening, or on the flip side where something has been taken away?
Yes, um, so that's, so if you look at well. It's tricky, because the easiest way to see those things is to look at the individual school and sort of see the changes that each school is undergoing. I think we could certainly provide you with a list of all the changes that happened inside any of the categories. Um, so for example, you know, we have a tracker and it has every single school that got a classroom change. Um, what type of classroom was it? What was the staffing for that classroom? What grades was within and and so on and so forth? So we could certainly, um, give you a list of all with all that information. I don't believe that list is currently in the budget book, but it's certainly something we
Okay.
Okay. My other question is, I'm glad to see that we were able to do some changes to make more investments back into libraries. And wondering where we are with the commitment of bringing a certain number of libraries online each year.
I think, um, I'll throw it, uh, throw this over to some of my colleagues and academics. Uh, but what I will say is I believe we're gonna end up making a solid dent this year. And one of the bigger issues we have that we're working on is frankly just facilities limitations. Right? We have a number of schools that just can't. They don't have the physical place for a library. Um, and so our number one priority is ensuring that every school with a library has a staffed library. That is really the number one goal, and then ensuring through our long-term facilities planning work that every school has the space for a library. And so I think those two things are really working well hand in hand, a partnership between our facilities and operations team and our academics team, with me just coming in right at the last minute when they flag a library being ready. So I, they're doing all the hard work. I just get to sort of do the accounting at the end.
Yeah, great. And I know you've all done a great job this year in terms of you know, trying to meet school needs and that, as Mr. O'Neill has said many times, that many of the school leaders he's talked to have been happy. Uh, is there any area of concern that this budget is not allowing us to attend to? That you've either heard from school leaders or parents about saying wish there'd been more investment or an X or Y?
You know, it's the the number one thing I've heard personally is actually sort of, it's 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 obviously a concern, but it's also sort of exciting that we're moving in the right direction. It's schools that feel like they're ready to move, accelerate beyond our timeline for the inclusive education rollout. Right? Where they're sort of like, I know you're doing grades one and two this year. But here's what we're thinking about for grades three, four, five, and six. Um, and so you know, we are trying wherever it makes sense and is possible to do in an equitable way to think about if there's something we can meet there for those schools that really are ready. But we know, you know, with limited funding, we do need to ensure that our rollout grades are getting everything they need first before we're investing in maybe grades that aren't ready yet. So I think for some of our school leaders and school teams, they're they're at this exciting moment where they're really, they're loving this work of inclusive ed. They're getting very excited about it. And now they're just, they're ready to sprint full speed ahead, and we're sort of saying actually just stay with the program, take the time with the rollout. It's worth focusing in on, you know, doing it well in these grade spans versus trying to do everything all at once. And so, you know, it's a balance, but I think it is exciting that makes us feel like we're heading in the right direction, at least for myself.
I would, um, I would say that it is before-school and after-school programming. Um. I mean, I think one of the things Essar did was it really allowed schools to develop that programming out. Um, and I think what has kind of happened is partner capacity is reduced in general uh, in the nonprofit world, and, um, and then, you know, certainly we moved over the things we could. Um, but I still think there's a gap. So one of the things that, um, you know, Carissa is doing in Partnership Division of OFCA is to really, first of all, get an an actual audit of who's doing what, so we can see where those gaps are. Uh, and then starting to really, uh, kind of try to go out and recruit partners to fill that gap. Whether it's we meet with philanthropic and funders who might be interested. But we have, on April seventeenth, we're bringing back principal for a day. Um, which was one of my favorite programs in BPS, because it gave a chance for businesses to really sort of, um, Because it gave a chance for businesses to really sort of see what, like all the good that's happening in our schools and come to learn about particular schools. And my guess is, you know, things like businesses offering tutoring support or mentoring support. Or things that can happen in the afternoon or before school. Those will be some of the things that get evolved as more and more schools do principal for a day. And so my hope is that that really like start, really starts to address some of the gap that we have in this particular area.
Great. Thank you. Those are my questions for now, and I look forward to a deep dive into the budget book. So I know that we'll be sending a lot of questions your way. If there's nothing else, we will now move on to public comment. Ms. Parvics?
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for individuals to address the school committee on school-related issues. Questions on school, on specific school matters are referred to the superintendent. Questions on policy matter may be discussed with the committee later. We have forty-four speakers this evening. Each person will have two minutes to speak, and I will remind you when you have thirty seconds remaining. Once you reach your two minutes, we will allow you to finish your sentence before moving on to the next speaker. Please feel free to email your comments for distribution to the committee. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. The time that an interpreter uses for English interpretation will not be deducted from a speaker's allotted time. Please direct your comments to the chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. Please note, the comments of any public speaker do not represent the Boston Public Schools or the Boston School Committee. Please state your name, affiliation, and where you live before you begin. Please sign into Zoom using the name you register with for public comment. And be ready to unmute and turn on your camera when it's your turn to speak. Please raise your virtual hand when I call your name. Please speak slowly so the interpreter can capture what you're saying. Our first group is Travis Marshall, Mike Heishman, Hope Bastian, John Mudd, and Betsy Yoshimura. Please raise your hand. Travis Marshall?
Hello.
Hi, good evening. Apologies, I'm not back home yet. But my name is Travis Marshall. I live in Rosendale. I am the proud parent of students at the English High School and the Bates Elementary School. I'm also a member of Quality Schools for Every Student, QUEST. And you all are here tonight to talk about a budget that's a public document, that's voted on by members of this committee and by our elected city council. But what we are not discussing is the separate and significant funding stream that exists for schools serving communities with social capital and wealth. Four years ago, QUEST released a report based on the 2018 Ernst &amp; Young Audit of Individual School Accounts and Their Associated Nonprofits. The report revealed a large gap between a minority of schools with significant fundraising operations and the majority of BPS schools with modest or non-existing fundraisers. It also revealed stark disparities correlated with the racial wealth gap in this city. As school budgets tighten, private fundraising plays a large but invisible role in exacerbating the gap between haves and have-nots. Between schools that supplement with large-scale philanthropy and schools that rely solely on the budget you pass. Based on IRS reports, the largest fundraising school in this district have increased their revenues substantially in the years since the audit. The equity gap continues to grow, but BPS cannot measure what it does not track. QUEST continues to recommend that BPS create a dashboard that is updated annually for all funding sources. So that the funding of our public schools remains transparent to stakeholders and taxpayers. This is an issue of transparency, and it's an issue of fairness. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Marshall. Our next speaker is Mike Heishman.
Mike Heishman, Dorchester. Last night, I watched President Trump's hysterical State of Disunion speech dominated by his racist attack on our migrant siblings. It was not an attack on all immigrants. He offered a gold card. For $5 million, you could purchase entry in a pathway to citizenship. If you have enough green, you could get the gold, and the color of your skin won't matter. Earlier today, I attended a pro-immigrant rally at Boston City Hall. I am currently multitasking, watching the hearing while writing tonight's testimony. I want to thank both Mayor Wu and my congressperson, Ayanna Pressley, for their principal participation at this witch hunt. Unfortunately, there are similarities with Trump's racism and this Wu Skipper budget. Let's look at the facilities plan. Most of our schools are unhealthy, unsafe, and in other ways barriers to providing a high-quality education for all of our children. What we need is an aggressive plan to rehabilitate existing schools and even better to build new ones. But Wu Skipper tells us that they cannot afford an ambitious plan. Closing schools, however, saves us lots of money. The question for past, present, and future budgets is which school communities will be destroyed? The answer: destroy school communities inhabited by the majority of black and brown children and low-income children and families, many of them multilingual immigrants and many with special needs. Destroy school with low M-CAS scores, destroy school communities with successful inclusions on writing code-teaching models. Schools inhabited by large number of white children who not get closed against their will, instead they get the gold card. I call for a major expansion of the successful parent mentor.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hope Bastian?
Hi, my name is Hope Bastian, and I'm a parent of a kindergartner at The Hurley in the South End. And I'm here to testify for the importance of the parent mentor program for our school and our district and share a minute of my experiences over the last year, the many positive impacts of this program, and a glimpse of all that could be lost if this program is not fully funded in the future. Community listening sessions and your surveys have told you what's important to families and where budget dollars need to be allocated. We want a high-quality education for all of our kids. You all know that diverse student body is not served when educators and the adults around our students do not understand their lives, their language, their cultures, and their contexts. Through the parent mentor program, I spend two and a half hours a day in a dual-language fifth-grade classroom to support learners and teachers. This program creates an unparalleled opportunity to bring parents and schools together, building mutual trust and deepening all of our understanding of the challenges going on within the school and how to make things better. Multilingual parent mentors are irreplaceable. They're culturally competent native language learning supports that all of our students need. And you don't need to train us, we're already there. We're our, we're our children's first teachers, and we're ready to keep doing that work for all of the kids in our schools and our communities. As a parent mentor, I've seen my peers and the students that we serve achieve amazing things. Every Friday, our group of parents get together. And we speak four languages, and we come together, we get trained. There's people who are taking classes in college, there's people who are becoming, taking on new roles in the district as paraprofessional substitutes with after-school programs and in the kitchen. This program has changed me and it's changed us all. I'm making plans to apply for the BEACT program to become a teacher next year. This program has made, has been a success, and we need to keep it. We need to keep our schools rooted in our community.
Thank you very much. Your time is up. Our next speaker is John Mudd.
My name is John Mudd. I'm from Cambridge. School committee seems to value the advice of the Council of Great City Schools. In the council's guidelines on student outcomes-focused governance, it says that a school board should approve the annual budget only after determining that the governing board's goals are the first priority in resource allocation and in reaching the SMART goals of the board. As I've testified earlier, there's a cut of $8 million in the proposed BPS budget for supportive multilingual learners and an apparent cut of seventy-one bilingual teachers and aides. Suggested cuts in the St. Stephen's Parent Mentor Program would remove scores of additional native language speakers from classrooms. All of this is happening when BPS has seen an increase of a thousand immigrant students this year. In this context, the council's guidance on the budget raises a number of questions that the school committee needs to have answered. How will these cuts improve multilingual learner student performance? How could these cuts achieve the goal of increased access to native language and native language instruction in comparing the four new small programs with the continued sending and assignment of multilingual learners into general education classrooms? In fact, what is the committee's overall SMART goal for multilingual learners? And what is the theory of action on how this will improve outcomes for multilingual learners? I want to congratulate the Finance and Budget Office for the initial draft of the, of the budget book. And I'll have obviously more comments later. But broadly, the council guidelines suggest what are the committee's student outcome SMART goals overall for each area? The council's guidelines call for answers, and so do many of us. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Betsy Yoshimura.
All right. Hello, my name is Betsy Yoshimura, and I live in East Boston. I have two children who attend the K through eight Mario Umana Dual Language Academy. I am here tonight to advocate for an increase in the Umana's budget to allow for the hiring of five additional staff members so that we may, in Dr. Linda Chen's words, ensure every student's success by being equipped with the resources and support needed to cultivate a robust learning environment. We have approximately 650 students and forty-one teachers in Paris. We have been operating with only one instructional coach for at least the past two years. But as she is, as she only has the bandwidth to provide instruction to our K through four teachers, our fifth through eighth grade teachers have been left without the benefit of her coaching. We were denied funding for an additional instructional coach. Recognizing that all of our teachers benefit from and deserve an instructional coach to help them evaluate and continually improve their classroom instructional skills, we made the difficult decision to eliminate a different position to pay for the additional instructional coach out of our discretionary budget. However, based on our enrollment and our students' needs across our programming, which includes life, ABA, ESD, and dual-language programs, we believe that the cost for this should not come from our discretionary budget and should instead be allocated to us by the district. We also have only one community field coordinator to service all of our 650 students. It is simply not tenable to have only one person responsible for fulfilling all of the duties assigned to a CFC in a school of our size. As such, we requested a second CFC, but were not granted the position. And due to our enrollment and student needs across our diverse programming, we believe that the funding for additional CFC should have been provided.
Our next speaker, our next group is Connie Cummings, Amaya Zintron, Maria Lys Lugo, Nathaniel Utter, and Alia Ford. Connie Cummings? You can start.
Hi, thank you, School Committee and Superintendent Skipper. My name is Connie Cummings, and I'm a teacher at the Roger Clapp Elementary School. I'm here on behalf to testify for the Parent Mentor Program from St. Stephen's. For three years, I've had the privilege of having a parent mentor in my classroom. It has made a tremendous difference in my classroom. More importantly, it's made a tremendous difference for my students. My parent mentor is there to help students with extra support, to give students who've been absent an extra boost, and to give support to students who might be having a difficult time. I've got years of experience, and I've raised my own kids. But my parent mentor gives me a unique perspective. She's a BPS mom who is raising kids in 2025. I cherish that perspective. The bond makes us closer. It's an invaluable exchange. Because of this program, I've seen parents become more involved in our school, including taking on leadership roles in the school'side council. I've witnessed parents become mentors, taking concerns to the State House. This program exemplifies that parent resources are among the most valuable resources that we can offer our school community. Because of this program, I've seen students feel unaccepted, feel accepted at our school. Many students who have not, English learners come to our school running and shouting into the arms of our parent mentor to say, thank goodness you're here, and share a few languages in their native tongue. This program is a huge win on so many levels. Dear School Committee, I urge you to fund this program to the fully extent possible. We're a stronger school because of this parent mentor program. Please, please, please support the program.
Our next speaker, our next two speakers are not signing to the meeting, so we will go with Nathaniel Utter. Please raise your hand. You can start. We, we can't hear you.
Lena, can we try to see if Nathaniel can go after this? I'd like to see if we can allow him to speak.
Yes, absolutely. So our next speaker is Alia Ford.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Hello, everyone. I would like to share my experience transitioning into community academy. I originally attended New Mission High School. Toward the middle of my ninth grade year, I transferred to CA. At first, I was very nervous about being in a new setting, but as time passed, I felt very comfortable within my environment at CA. I began taking classes more seriously. I was able to connect with my classmates and staff as if they were family. Being in a smaller setting, CA helped me stay more in tuned with my classes. I chose to stay at CA because they introduced me to many different things, such as the CA garden, do enrollment opportunities, out-of-state field trips, and a serving learning trip to the Dominican Republic. I encountered many new experiences that I couldn't have done in my previous school. After I graduate from CA, I plan on getting my associate's degree in radiology and working towards attaining a bachelor's degree. CA should remain open because other students deserve the opportunities my classmates and I have experienced. Unlike a regular public school, I feel supported every step of the way because the CA staff here ensures. because the CA staff here ensures that all students are supported and know the steps necessary to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's try with Nathaniel Uter again.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Nathaniel and I'm a tenth grade attending Community Academy. I live in Boston. I came from Boston Land School and transferred here in ninth grade. Throughout my time in Community Academy, I was able to spend my time on how it fit my needs and venturing different career paths more constructively, while still getting education to still challenge me, but not to the level where I would be unable to handle the workload. I was able to focus on my academics along with making connections and future planning. I feel like the proposal of closing Community Academy came off to me as a total surprise because although there were attendance concerns for those who did come, the school was extremely helpful, filled gaps with learning, and made meaningful connections. I also feel that this decision was made without the student voices, the ones who actually attended Community Academy. This school has been extremely helpful to many people as it gave us staff that could help us to strive and become our best selves, teaching us valuable lessons and overall helping us to grow in both academically and personally. I hope this school can continue being diploma-granting school because it has been extremely helpful to so many students, not just me, in countless number of ways. Community Academy is structured in such a way so that each student gets exactly what they need. Although limited funding, they go above and beyond to give students as many opportunities for growth. They also tailor the curriculum to make it fit each and every one of the students' needs to learn the best, making this a special place for many students to grow and achieve great things. This school changes life trajectories and I hope you all could witness life experience. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next group is Camaleel Rivera, Nayla Philz, Lea Serena, Gabrielle Antignano, and Nicole Livingstone. Please raise your hand. Camaleel Rivera? Camaleel Rivera, please turn on your camera. Yeah, we can't hear you. I don't know if you're you're unmuted, so.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Does my time start now?
Yeah, you can start.
Good afternoon. My name is Saint. I was referred to Community Academy due to a code of conduct issue from Snowden where I struggled academically because of the lack of individualized academic support, frequent violence, and feeling discouraged by the way teachers treated students. Since enrolling at Community Academy, I've experienced a positive change. The teachers treat everyone with respect. I genuinely want to attend school every day. That environment is much safer and the teachers truly care about each student's success. After graduating from Community Academy, I plan to be an artist. To do so, I've been working hard in school and have been on the honor roll since joining Community Academy and plan on continuing my education here. I'm done.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Our next speaker, Nayla Philz is not in the meeting. Lea? Serena?
Good evening. My name is Lea Serena and I am a proud Boston Public Schools alum, elementary teacher, and the Executive Vice President of the BTU. While the BTU is nearing two hundred days of working under an expired contract and it is past time to come to an agreement that meets the needs of our students and our educators, I'm here this evening to speak about the proposed school closures that you will be voting on at the next school committee meeting. For too long, many students in Boston have been denied equitable access to modern, sustainable, well-ventilated, and learning-centered school buildings. To achieve the stated goal of the district's own long-term facility plan to ensure a high-quality student experience closer to home, it is imperative that the district commence to completing the construction of at least three buildings annually and should detail such a plan to the public in the coming weeks, not years, a plan that allows families, students, and educators to plan and participate in the decisions that impact their schools and their education. Unfortunately, instead of focusing on buildings and renovations for too long, the BPS conversation has revolved around closures and disruption. Since 2000, Boston has closed thirty-five schools and constructed less than ten school buildings. How have these school closures benefited students and gotten us closer to high-quality experiences for every student? From where we stand as BTU members, we have experienced over the years as a string of broken promises. Our ask is simple, that school communities are allowed to stay together and given guarantees and voice when transitions need to happen. As you prepare to make decisions about the school closures proposals, I urge you to listen to the school communities that are being impacted, to listen to the families at the Dever, the students at the Mary Lion, and the students and educators at Community Academy. School communities have come together to rally, petition, and testify, and we urge you to listen to them. As we close out, I would like to draw your attention to a well-documented fact that school closures disproportionately impact students of color in our most vulnerable communities. It's imperative that we know that the demographics of our schools that are being proposed to have higher percentage of students of color and will have an impact on educators of color as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Gabrielle Antignano. You can start. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Gabrielle Antignano and I'm the family liaison at the Dever Elementary School in Dorchester. I'm here tonight to once again ask you to not close the Dever. Since there seems to be a focus tonight on community engagement, I'd like to start by asking some clarifying questions. Is community engagement telling our staff and families at 8:00 PM on a Zoom call and sending an email that their school is closing because BPS officials leaked the news to the media? Is it not being able to guarantee that our students and staff won't be forced to go through another school closure in the future since BPS is still refusing to release a detailed and transparent long-term facilities plan? Is it about submitting a proposal and forming a partnership with local community stakeholders like the Boys and Girls Club for a new state-of-the-art field house in the Columbia Point community and then excluding the Dever from the plan where we are originally a key part? Not to mention, just this past Friday, the Capitol Planning Team sent an email to the entire BPS community announcing that Ruth Batson Academy students would have access to the new facility while neglecting to mention the Dever. Despite our involvement in the original proposal and before a closure decision has been made, is it having zero meetings with the directly impacted Dever community about a proposed closure before it was announced, but having thirty meetings with the Madison Park community about getting a new school? Members of the school committee, everything I just listed are all action steps that were taken, or I could say not taken, by the Capitol Planning Team and other BPS district officials regarding this proposed closure. It seems the district is unaware of what community engagement entails.
Thirty seconds.
It is essential that BPS and the school committee reconsider and oppose the proposal to close the Dever. Closing our school would have a profound lasting negative impact on these students and families in a school that has made significant gains to be supportive and inclusive to all learners. The decision to close our school without meaningful community engagement is unjust and without a clear plan for the future, it's become apparent the district does not have a thoughtful plan for our students and families. Please allow our community to stay together.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Nicole Livingstone.
Hi.
Hi, you can start.
Okay. Good evening, members of the school committee. My name is Nicole Livingstone and I'm here once again to speak in opposition of the proposed closure of the Dever School. The argument that this decision is data-driven doesn't hold up, especially when it comes to the Dever. First, let's address the claim that smaller schools should be closed in favor of larger ones. The Dever is already a large school. We serve pre-K through sixth grade with four hundred and forty-four students. Next, the idea that declining enrollment being a reason to close schools doesn't apply to the Dever since our enrollment has arose over the last three years. Another point is the issue of building usage and capacity. BPS has two different capacity figures for the Dever. Some reports say we can hold five hundred and fourteen students, putting us at eighty-six percent full, while others say that we can hold four hundred and twenty-four students, which actually puts us over capacity. This discrepancy shows that the data being used isn't consistent. And then, there's the argument about facility quality. The Dever's facility score is higher than approximately one-third of the schools in BPS that aren't being considered for a closure. Not to mention that we have a gym and a fully-staffed library, as we brought up in discussions tonight. So why are we being singled out? These inconsistencies in the data are alarming. But what's even more troubling is that this decision further marginalizes vulnerable communities at a time when they need the most support. Mayor Wu was in Washington publicly committing to protecting immigrant families. Yet this closure would harm those same families who rely on the Dever for support. This plan is not well-thought-out. It lacks a long-term vision and has not included the voices of community stakeholders. We heard an update on community involvement, which only included highlights from schools that are merging. These also are all community meetings held after the notification of closure, not involvement in the actual decision-making. Until a true comprehensive plan is developed, one that benefits our students and families, I ask you to vote against this proposal. Our children deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next group of speakers is Madison Morley, Cheryl Buckman, Carolyn Branca, Katrina Jackson, and Jamal Rahman. Please raise your hand. Madison Morley?
Good evening. My name is Madison Morley and I'm a Dever teacher and Dorchester resident. I'm here to speak about decisions that are not just policy choices, but moral failures. The proposed closure of the Dever is an act of cruelty against our immigrant families, especially in the current political climate. These families rely on the Dever for much more than just an education. It is a place where children feel safe and where families receive huge amounts of support. Closing the school means uprooting stability for families who have already faced significant hardship. It is not just a school we're closing, it's a community. But perhaps the most troubling of all is the lack of community engagement and unwillingness to see the full Dever picture. Decisions that affect student lives and futures cannot be made in a vacuum. Yet this decision continues to be carried out without the proper dialogue. And we have definitely not seen any of the family breakfasts or classroom conversations mentioned earlier tonight. I also take issue with BPS trying to diminish this trauma by pretending that all students will be like that Clapp student excited about his new gym. Mergers preserve school communities. Closures do not. So please do not insult our intelligence and pretend they're the same. We are also told that no consideration was given to our receivership status or the immense amount of work we have put in to claw our way out of it, nor was consideration given to our school quality review reports, which have consistently shown us as a model for educational practices and as a school that our evaluators use as a model for other districts. As I've said before, if I looked at my students just as a set of numbers like BPS did with us with this decision, I would be fired for being a bad teacher. But it's okay when BPS does it. I am tired of constantly coming to these meetings and begging to just be allowed to do my job. But that's what I'm doing. I beg the school committee to allow us to continue teaching, to allow our students to continue learning. If we need to leave our building, then so be it, but find another space for us because the Dever community is worth fighting for. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cheryl Buckman.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Buckman, former Dever graduate, parent to a sixth grader at the Dever, and spokesperson for the Dever. I'm also a resident of South Boston. I'm here to oppose the closure to the Dever Elementary. The Dever to this community isn't like any regular elementary school. It's an extraordinary school with dedicated educators and staff. The Dever thrives on community and a sense of belonging. The Dever is a school that is so diverse in rich with culture. The school makes sure that their full inclusion model, that each child, no matter what, learns together as one. If you close the school, it's not about losing a school. It's about taking away a safe place for our children, especially the most vulnerable ones in families who depend on the Dever. You're about to tear apart a thriving family community that is built on helping one another succeed. BPS, you're about to break a decades-long promise to a community at Harbor Point. Many have came together to sign online petitions and campaign letters to save the Dever. And many education activist groups find this unjustified. And Desi broke a promise to the Dever and let BPS do what they saw fit. In the words of my child, "I love my school."
Thirty seconds.
"We are all like brothers and sisters. I'm losing my place where I truly felt heard and belonged to past and current students that they have all called Dever home. I'm not here to ask you to give us the moon. I'm here to kindly see if you can reconsider keeping the Dever intact and give them what they need. Don't break a promise." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Carolyn Branca.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. You can start. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Branca and I'm from Rosendale. I'm here in support of keeping Community Academy open as a diploma-granting school. As the Guidance Council Community Academy, my responsibilities include admitting and discharging students. One thing I can tell you about the referrals I receive is that I accept everyone. Community Academy accepts students that other schools don't want. In addition to students with long-term suspensions and expulsions, students with open felony charges in the community, and students transitioning out of DYS custody, Community Academy accepts students who have chronic poor attendance, lack of engagement, gaps in their learning, every type of IEP, including substantially separate students. Community Academy is considered a last stop for high schools in BPS. And for many, it is a lifeline. That is why I have a very difficult time discharging anyone. Even if a student has been absent from school for three months, as long as they're texting with their school social worker, that's a connection. Even if a student only shows up one day a week and is occasionally handing in an online assignment, that's a connection. The reason I don't discharge students for so long is because I recognize the lifeline that Community Academy is for many of our students who would otherwise be drowning. How can I take this lifeline away? Yes, this makes our attendance rate pretty low. But we're not doing this for the attendance rates. We're doing it for the lifeline connection because every student matters. CA is not as best can be measured by traditional data. Everything about CA is special and different. That is why truly knowing and understanding the success of our school can only be done by truly knowing and understanding our students and families and hearing their personal stories, knowing where they started and how far they've come. School committee members, please hear those stories tonight. Please read the letters and testimonials that are emailed to you. Please keep Community Academy open as a diploma-granting Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Katrina Jackson.
Can you hear me? Hi, my name is Katrina Jackson. I'm a math teacher at Community Academy. Reading testimonies from our petition that we gave at the school against closing Community Academy and as a diploma-granting program, the first testimony is from a parent. It means a lot to me and my child has come a long way with his studies. I love that the classes are small, so my child isn't being left behind. He gets help. He needs I love that the classes are small, so my child isn't being left behind. He gets help. He needs, he needs. My child is more happy to attend here than a regular BPS school. It's so much chaos for him at a regular BPS school, but by attending Community Academy, he feels more safe. The next comment is from a student from Community Academy. This school is the best high school I've been to. It gives me space and the right attention with teachers. I've gained and met so many awesome people who want to see me win. The knowledge and information I've gained from this school is one hundred times better than the two public high schools I've been to. This school gives students a second chance. Don't take it away. And the last testimony I'm going to read is from another former student. This school is more than just a building. It's a lifeline for students who, like me, needed extra support to succeed. The staff is truly amazing, going above and beyond to ensure every student feels valued and capable. Their encouragement and dedication helped me graduate, and without them, I wouldn't be in college today, let alone on the chancellor's list. It's heartbreaking to think they're trying to shut down a place that changes lives the way this school changed mine. So I'm here to ask that you hear these testimonies, that you read all of the testimonies that come from the Community Academy and every other school that's being affected. And I also want you, urge you to know that Community Academy gives the students opportunities that they need. We have students that play, play sports outside of the school that we're connected to, all type of resources. Thank you.
Your time is up. Thank you. Our next speaker is Jamal Rahman.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You can start.
Please. My name is Jamal Rahman. I'm a Dorchester guy. I've been a staffer at Community Academy for thirteen years. One of the reasons why it's been proposed to close Community Academy is due to the low building score and that the school received in the facilities plan. It's clear that by using raw satellite data, the district has been disingenuous in giving the score by leaving out off-street data. We've been resourceful, innovative, creative in our building to ensure that our students have a well-rounded high school experience that they deserve. The building score says we don't have an auditorium, true, but we convert the staircase foyer into a banquet hall every year to accommodate large celebrations. Says we don't have a gym, true. However, we have a full weight room, basketball court, we use Franklin Park. We have partnered with Reggie Lewis Center and use their gym to hold gym classes. Says we don't have a library, true. However, we frequently take trips to Coffee Library. It's an easy orange line ride that we do. And we also have a multi-purpose media room, arts. Well, we've been working for the last eight-plus years with TCP to offer dance classes, hip-hop classes, studio recording time in coffee, and they've transformed the cafeteria into an art space. In addition to these things, we have a partnership with BU where we've built community garden, and we have full use of their state-of-the-art Earl Center. We also partner with Boston English High School for All Sports. As a matter of fact,
Thirty seconds.
The first baseball state championship since nineteen seventy-one was led by CA student Howard Twenty-Twenty-Four Valadictorian. We've worked hard to fulfill these components of our school despite the building. Our students, who have come from schools that have all these quote-unquote "high-quality amenities", have come to us because they haven't been successful in these schools regardless of the school's building scores. They thrive here. Maybe the most important thing is that that's not accounted for is the fact that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Your time is up. Our next group of speakers is Bailey Morse, Chris McLoughlin, Simon McLeod, Jamal Grant, and Anna Angelova. Please raise your hands. Bailey Morse? You can start.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bailey Morse, and I'm a teacher at the Dever Elementary and a Dorchester resident. I don't have much to say tonight. This is largely in part because it feels pointless to repeatedly testify and to rally and find other coworkers, families, community members, you name it, to testify and write in opposition to the Dever school closure because it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter how often we find issues and flaws with the capital planning team's plan or reasoning. It doesn't matter how opposed the students, teachers, parents, families, and because it's ignored. It doesn't matter that the Black Advocate for Educational Excellence, Black Educators Alliance of Massachusetts, Boston Network for Black Student Achievement, Black Teachers Matter, Citizens for Public Schools, Harbor Point Community Task Force, NAACP Boston Branch, and the St. Stevens Youth Program, to name a few, all oppose this method of school closure. And it's not that it doesn't matter because it truly doesn't matter. It doesn't matter because it seems to fall that, it doesn't matter because through dozens and dozens of counterarguments, affidavits, and proving reasons given wrong, it feels like it falls on deaf ears. Students, teachers, families, and the community feel ignored. Please allow our community to stay together.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Chris McLoughlin. You can start. Thank you.
Thanks. Good evening, school committee members. My name is Chris McLoughlin, and I'll be speaking on behalf of a former Community Academy student in opposition of the closure. My name is Samoya Galloway, and I graduated from Community Academy High School in two thousand twenty-three. I was sent to CA from English High School because I was undercredited and needed a smaller, more focused environment to succeed. At first, I wasn't sure what to expect, but the school gave me the support and push I needed to make it through the years. The teachers and staff here not only helped me with school, but also opened my eyes to the realities of life. They taught me how to navigate the real world from understanding responsibilities to making better decisions for my future. The support didn't stop at graduation. Even after high school, the staff is still here for us, helping students sign up for jobs, enroll in college, and stay on the right path. That ongoing support has been invaluable for me and so many others. With that said, I don't think the proposed transition program will work well for students who are placed here due to conduct issues or through DYS. Many of my peers who came from those situations struggled to adjust because they had already been through so many transitions in traditional environments that didn't work for them. Ninety days is not enough time to make a real difference for these kids. I've experienced my own trauma, losing close friends to the system or the streets, so I know how important safety are. This school gave me that, but constantly switching programs for kids in the system only sets them back further. They need consistency and a chance to truly heal and grow, not another program they're just passing through. I hope you can consider my experience in your decision-making process. This school is not only important to me, but the future of the young people in Boston. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Simone McLeod.
Hi, good evening. I'm going to be sharing testimonials from two parents. I am a biology and psychology teacher at Community Academy and a proud graduate of BPS school system. Hector Pimental Parent writes, "Community Academy is exactly what I was hoping it to be. Words cannot express what it means to me to see my son approaching graduation. The structure of the school and its format addresses and focuses on getting the student moving forward, meeting the requirements for graduation and beyond." Second parent, Charlene Utter. "My son struggles in school. In every school, I've placed him to find a connection, eager to learn and strive in. When we found this school, he went from barely passing to straight A's in this school. He loves going to school now and looks forward to being part of a community at this school. This school helps families and helps the kids that are in the school and turn into great adults by listening to them, by giving them opportunities that will shape their future, and they don't limit themselves to help one or two kids." Like I have issues in the past with, "They dedicated themselves to helping every student, parent, and even, in my case, my younger daughter that doesn't even go to that school." So instead of taking this away from a community that is already struggling, you don't, you guys look into
Thirty seconds.
of building them up and protecting the people that can help in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Jamal Grant.
Hi there. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. My name is Jamal Grant. I'm speaking against the closure of Community Academy, and I'm here to share an anecdote from Eli Tucker Raymond, our community partner at Boston University. "Community Academy creates an environment for students and staff that fosters emotional support, academic success, and strategies for accomplishing both. It works because of the relationships that people build with students. It takes time to build relationships with students to support their success, and forty-five days won't do it. Those children will have to try and form bonds with faculty and staff at Community Academy, then have to do it all over again when they go back to their homeschool, if that's even a good idea. The criteria that has been used to shut down all schools should particularly not apply to Community Academy. Students go to the school because they are chronically absent. They go to the school because they are not thriving at their typical high schools. The school also received a below-building score. The school is not the building. If the intent is to shut down the building, the school should remain a degree-granting high school in another location." I have about a minute left, so I do want to share some personal anecdotes as well. Students at Community Academy, when they go there, they choose to stay there more often than not, and they stay there for a reason. Community is a profoundly powerful thing with transformative properties that you can't necessarily quantify easily, but the impact is no doubt.
Thirty seconds.
Now, a lot of our kids have never had a safe space to learn in until they've come here. And if BPS is really invested in serving all students, then the decision to close this school without consulting our key stakeholders, the community and their families, feels disingenuous and outright counterintuitive to BPS's mission to serve all students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Anna Angelova.
Good evening. Do you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You can start.
My name is Anna Angelova, and I'm an inclusion specialist at Community Academy. A significant part of my role involves providing academic support for our seniors. And tonight, I would like to bring attention to a critical issue, the glaring discrepancy in the reported graduation rates at Community Academy. This is not just a statistical matter. It is a matter of the future for our students. Data plays a crucial role in decision-making, especially when it comes to shaping the future of educational institutions. And here, the data we have been provided with by DESI does not reflect the reality of the situation at CA. Graduation rates are typically calculated based on a cohort of students who entered the institution at the same time. However, as an alternative high school, our student population is highly transient, which means that the cohort numbers we are measured against constantly shift, impacting the accuracy of the reported rates. When graduation rates are calculated based on an uninterrupted nine-for-twelve grade enrollment, it fails to account for the unique challenges we face here at CA, where many students enter and exit at different points throughout their high school careers. Just a few examples. School year twenty-two, DESI reported a graduation rate of twenty-nine-point-one percent with a cohort of seventeen students. The actual graduation rate was seventy-point-five percent with twelve graduates. Last year, we had a cohort of twelve students, ten of whom graduated proudly with an eighty-third graduation rate. It is evident that the disparity is startling, while DESI's numbers show a lower graduation rate. CA's actual graduation numbers are significantly higher. These discrepancies do not just misrepresent our success. They fail to reflect the true dedication and achievement of our students and staff. I urge everyone to please reconsider the data being used in decision-making. We must look beyond these flawed numbers and truly recognize the hard work and resilience of the students at Community Academy. If we allow misleading data to determine our future, we risk losing a vital and life-saving resource for our students.
Our next group of speakers is Deidre Manning, Lakisha Williams, Mansur Buffens, Alex Odlinsky, and Dr. Malcolm Bryant. Deidre Manning, and please raise your hand.
Could I please go in the next group? I'm not at my house. I just need another five or 10 minutes.
Yes.
Thank you.
And Lakisha Williams?
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, yes.
Hi, how are you guys doing? I'm the family liaison at Community Academy. I've been there for four years now. I'm going to share some thoughts from a parent and one of our partners. So I'll start off with a parent. "It's important that Community Academy stays open so that children attending can have staff that care about them. The teachers, staff, the teachers and staff are amazing and really care about our children. The children have another place to call home. It would really hurt the lives of children if they were to close down. We need Community Academy and so do the children." And I'm also going to need another statement from one of our partners from TCP. Her name is Lisa. And she explains, "TCP has been a proud partner of Community Academy for over ten years. The relationships we've, the relationships we've built with both students and staff have grown beyond programming. It has truly become a family. We've witnessed students grow in so many ways, both academically and personally, because of the love and care poured into them by the school. I've also observed how comfortable students are around the staff and how deeply rooted the family-like connection is within the school community. Schools that genuinely care about their students are rare, and it's essential to keep them open. Strong trust in relationships like these take time to build, and it would be a tremendous loss, not only for the staff and partners, but most importantly for the student if these things, if this were taken away." And thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mansur Buffens.
Please unmute yourself and turn on your camera. Thank you.
Hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You can start.
Good evening. My name is Mansur Buffens, and I moved to the Boston area from Atlanta to attend the Harvard Graduate School of Education. And a few years ago, I graduated, and since graduating, I've been teaching humanities at Community Academy. I just want to say that Community Academy is a special school with outstanding students. For the entirety of the school's existence, the staff has been predominantly black as well as the student body, and these conditions have allowed for the development of a really unique community. And with that community, we've been advancing black education in the district and the education of black students, black, brown students, and more marginalized students in general. And the successes of this school cannot be measured by conventional methods. Year after year, CA has been graduating highly capable students, some of whom may have never seen a capping gown, increasing them in esteem, spirit, and capability. But CA didn't always grant degrees, like a caterpillar. Like a caterpillar becoming a butterfly, there were internal forces that made the school change from a program to a degree granting institution of learning. An alternative school as opposed to a stigmatized program. So why revert back? I ask that you all don't be complicit in the destruction of another black school. Our schools have been burned down, our schools, our school have been burned to the ground. Our schools have been desegregated to the ground. Our schools have been underfunded to the ground. And I'm asking not vote our school away. And I implore you in this moment to be anti-racist. And I'll end with, um, the words of a former student, Jason Cross. When I look back for heroes in my life that planted the seeds of becoming a black man with convictions for my freedom to be lived out on purpose, I look to Community Academy. Thank you. Please make the best decision because that decision will be remembered.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Alexander Linsky.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You can start. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Alex Orlinsky and I have taught at the Dever for seven years. I'm here tonight because Dever is more than a school. It is a lifeline for our students, a foundation for our families, and a pillar of our community. BPS claims that this is about high-quality student experiences, yet Dever already provides that with a proficient rating in curriculum, assessment, and strong instruction. Just last month, our school quality review highlighted our strengths in rigorous instruction, student engagement, and data-driven interventions. Dever is not failing, it is growing. This past fall, we collaborated with BPS, DESI, and Commissioner Johnston on a post-receivership plan. The end of receivership was in sight. We were committed to Dever's future, but BPS and DESI canceled our final meeting and blindsided us with closure. Even worse, DESI has admitted that they were unaware of this closure plan, calling it an oversight. We have been a leader in inclusion. Since twenty-twenty-one, Dever has had full inclusion and this year we dismantled SEI classrooms, something BPS keeps delaying to do district-wide. Our students know the value of this school. One of my third graders recently told me, quote, "The school means a lot to me and the other kids here because we have fun and we learn a lot of new things for building our careers." This school is getting us prepared for our actual life. We are all getting older to the point where life is starting and is going to be hard. So I ask you, what school committee? What will the Boston School Committee say to my third grader? That the square footage of our classroom is more valuable to BPS than the education and stability of our students? This has never been about student outcomes. Superintendent Skipper admitted on January seventh that Dever would be considered for Ruth Batson Academy use
Thirty seconds.
Presented to the Dever community on February twelfth. This closure has never been about students, it is about real estate. BPS is using walk zones and building scores as an excuse to justify this closure, hoping recycled slideshows, repeated speeches, and free sandwiches will keep the community complacent. If BPS truly believes in a community-based education, work with us, not against us. Move us, merge us, but do not close us. Do what is right, keep Dever open. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next group is, Dr. Malcolm Bryant is not in the meeting. Our next group is Hilda Gonzalez, Zoila Alvarado, Haley Petraitis, Leah Thomas, and Antonio Benson. Hilda Gonzalez is not in the meeting, Zoila Alvarado. Uh, you can start.
Alright. Good evening and thank you for being here. My name is Zoila Alvarado and I'm a first grade teacher at the Dever Elementary. This is not just a meeting, it is our last chance to fight for the Dever Elementary. The decision to close our school is more than a logistical move. It is a decision that will uproot children, disrupt their education, and strip them of a place where they feel safe, supported, and valued. More than that, it threatens to break apart the school community we have built, the family that we have formed, and the deep connections that make the Dever more than just a school. My students, just six and seven years old, are already facing a challenge many of us never had to. Learning a new language while trying to find their voice. Every year, argument writing is a struggle, but when they heard that their school might close, something changed. Their words came alive. They found their voices. For the first time, they weren't just writing an assignment, they were writing a plea. Writing is hard for them, but they push through because they know what's at stake. They need the adults making this decision to listen, not just to hear, but to truly listen. Their words are simple, but their message is powerful. Dever is their home and no child should have to fight to keep their home. So now I'll let my students speak for themselves. Dear Mary Skipper, I think you should not close the Dever. We love the school. We are a community because I have friends. I love the school because I love my friends. Thank you, Wendy. Dear Mary Skipper, please do not close the Dever. We love the school because everyone is kind. The Dever teaches us to be kind to students. Please do not close the Dever. Love, Anika. Dear Miss Mary Skipper, please do not close the Dever. We love it. It is special. I love the Dever. Can you not close the Dever? Thank you, Alex. Dear Mary Skipper, please keep the school open. I love my teachers because they help me learn so much. I have friends, please do not close the Dever. Thank you, Wanda. Dear Mary Skipper, please do not close the Dever. I have friends. I like the Dever. I like my teachers. I like my classes because I learn. Thank you, Wellington. Dear Mary Skipper, I do not want to close the Dever. I love my friends. I love my teachers because they are kind. I like to play outside. Please do not close the Dever. Love, Nobia.
Thank you, your time is up.
Thanks.
Haley, Haley Petraitis.
Good evening. My name is Haley Petraitus. I am a teacher at the Dever School. I'm here to fight for our school to remain open, but also to shed light on how this process has detrimentally affected a community and will worsen if the closure continues. It is glaringly apparent that the Dever community is not going to accept the ludicrous reasons that the district has presented for closure of the Dever School. We represent the resilient community of Dorchester that love and depend on the Dever. The district has been notorious for taking and taking more from the Dever each year. It began with putting us into receivership. Next, we had to readjust to numerous changing receivers and initiatives. Then last year, you took away one million dollars from our budget. This year, you physically gave away our classrooms, staff rooms, and even our bathrooms to the RBA school, and then turned around and said we didn't have adequate spacing. Despite all this taking, we have risen to the challenge and provided high-quality education and resources to our students and families. Yet here we are fighting to remain open while you toy with closing our school as a final act. The lack of empathy shown to the community is baffling. It hurts real people and devastates the very fabric of the community you supposedly said that you value. I asked my fourth grade ESL students why they love the Dever. This is what they said. I love the Dever School because it let me learn English and Miss Gabby gives us clothes. Another student wrote, "These are people's homes you are taking. People learn here, including me, so don't take away the one thing we love." A regular school educates students, but the Dever provides safety, guidance, and stability, in addition to a great education. Don't take more from us than you already have. When a school like the Dever is shuttered, it strips away opportunities for the most vulnerable, forcing children and families to navigate a new system in a new school. The loss of the Dever means the loss of a sense of belonging, a hub of support, and a vital resource for upward mobility. It sends a clear message that these families, educators, and our efforts are and have been expendable, therefore eroding trust in a public system that is meant to serve all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next two speakers are not in the meeting, so we will go with the next group. Um, Katie De La Rosa, Chaz Glick, Jaspreet Kaur, Audrey Martinez-Gudapakam, Haval Abdul Rahman, Liz Everson, Kristen Stigman, and Deidra Manning. Katie De La Rosa. You can start. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Katie De La Rosa and I've been a BPS educator for fifteen years. I'm speaking tonight to stop the proposal to close the Mary Lion Upper School. I was one of just four lead teachers who started the Mary Lion Pilot High School when it opened in two thousand and nine, and I worked there for thirteen years. A lot has changed, but what has not changed are the core principles of what the Mary Lion is as a K-12 fully-inclusive school. What makes the Lion different is that the foundation is built on the idea that educators can and will change the learning environment to fit the needs of students and not the other way around. The foundation allows educators to individualize all aspects of the school experience for students. What I've heard from families and students over the past few weeks validates these efforts made a difference. One alumni said, "I never would have been able to navigate the world as I can now without the support I received by including us with Gen Ed kids, socializing us as if we're not different, and giving us the support we need." Another alumni wrote, "Many of my college friends could not tell me about a fellow learner with a disability that they had a meaningful friendship with." They missed valuable allyship opportunities and life lessons by not attending a school like the Mary Lion. It's so important that BPS is now expanding inclusion across the district. However, I echo the sentiments I hear from many others who ask, "Why dismantle a school known for inclusion instead of investing in it as a model for other schools who are just starting out?" What will be better for Lion students as they get reassigned to other schools who also have low building scores or high-quality experience scores? What will happen to the K-six students when they lose access to the upper-school cafeteria, gym, and library? I ask that you keep the Mary Lion as a K-12 and not take away such a valuable resource for BPS students and families, especially without the guarantee of something better for them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Chaz Glick.
Hello.
Hello, you can start.
I'm Chaz Glick and I'm an instructional coach at the Dever. Like others, I express my opposition to closing the Dever. When a school closes, an entire community is dismantled, and the lasting impact of the work done at the Dever will be unfairly disrupted. Students and staff who have worked tirelessly to build a positive and supportive environment are now facing separation through no fault of their own. If the current Dever building is unable to provide a high-quality student experience, the priority should be relocating students and staff together to another location. Let me reiterate, we want to remain together. Thirty percent of students are facing homelessness and have been specifically assigned to the Dever. It's unjust due to their living conditions. These students are not factored into decision-making regarding the closure of their school. There is an increasing concern that closing schools is a recurring cycle where students are repeatedly displaced due to decisions beyond their control. Our students would benefit from the assurance they can remain with teachers and staff who know and support them. The Dever community did not receive feedback from the district about the state of our school building until the closure announcement. This is troubling considering the capital planning team is saying they're working transparently. The quality of our school community and instruction has been praised by the School Empowerment Network reviews. Dispanding our community due to an inadequate building ignores these achievements, investments, and undermines the progress we've made. In initial meetings with the Dever, the chief of capital planning stated the building would not be used by Ruth Batson Academy. Yet in a school committee meeting on January twenty-second, it was revealed that the Dever building would in fact be utilized by RBA and renovated for their future use. It is both deceptive and insulting to suggest that they would not use this space. So which is it? The Dever community was told the building is unsuitable, yet it's been deemed acceptable for RBA. Your decision sends a message to the students that they're not worth the investment. There are thirty-eight schools with lower building experience scores and nine schools with both a lower utilization rate and lower building experience score. So why the Dever? This raises questions about the criteria used to determine school closures. We urge you to reconsider this proposal and explore solutions that will keep the Dever communities together, our students, families, and staff deserve that.
Our next speaker is Jaspreet Kaur. You can start.
Great. Good evening. My name is Jaspreet Kar and I'm a social worker at Community Academy. I am reading a letter on behalf of a senior at Community Academy in opposition to the closure. Her journey is important to share because it highlights what our students are currently experiencing. My name is Azariah and I am a senior at Community Academy. I was sent here in the ninth grade for conduct reasons and decided to stay even when I could go back to the school that sent me here. Since then, I have worked hard to turn things around. I've had my ups and downs, but Community Academy has always been there to support me. This year has been one of the hardest of my life. I experienced housing issues and it ruined my attendance. My attendance went down not because I didn't want to be in school, but because life was too much. Even then, the staff never gave up on me. They made sure I had support, resources, counseling, and schoolwork to complete outside of school so I wouldn't fall behind. They even put together a transportation plan to help me get to school. But some days, life was just too hard to make it there. Now, the district wants to close Community Academy because of attendance, but that decision doesn't show what's really happening. Attendance is not about the school itself, it's about the struggle students face outside. At CA, the staff understand that. They meet students where they are at instead of punishing them and giving up on them for things they cannot control. They work with us to make sure we still have a chance no matter what's going on in our lives. For so many of us like me, Community Academy is more than a school. It's a second chance. It's a place where we're not judged for our past but focused on building a better future. If CA is taken away, where will students like me go?
Thirty seconds.
Please keep Community Academy open. We need it more than anyone understands. Thank you. Azariah Davis Close.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Audrey Martinez-Gudapakam.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, could you please turn on your camera?
I, yes, sorry about.
No problem. Thank you.
Good evening. I, I asked that before deciding about the parent mentoring program at Saint Stevens and closing schools, like smaller schools such as Mary Lions, that you put on your parent hat, like many of the good parents in BPS who have shared with me countless stories about sacrifice and risking their lives for their family. They understand the importance of finances, but they also make the impossible possible for their children. They know not all children are the same, and some children need more attention in smaller schools. These parents keep in mind long-term goals, and it's why they are willing to endure countless hardships so that their children can succeed in the future. This is why I know parents and parent mentoring programs can become the best teachers for our children. They are inspiring role models who persist when the situation is tough and constantly look for ways to improve. This is not just my opinion, but it's based on over six years of collecting data from many BPS parents who are also BPS parents. When given support and opportunity, these parents go far because they know it contributes to the success of their own children and others. As one parent explained, these parent mentoring programs empower her because she can help teachers and other students. And then when she goes home, she can help her own children. So although in the short term, it may be
Thirty seconds.
more efficient to cut costs, to make decisions that don't upset rich and greedy developers and put all of our children in large schools, please instead, think like one of these good BPS parents about the long-term success of our children. Because as parents, we know that not all our children's needs can be met in the same way. Please have the courage to be willing to make them possible, possible.
Thank you, your time is up.
To families who do the same.
Um, Haval Abdul Rahman is not in the meeting, so we will go with Liz Everson.
Good evening, school committee members. My name is Liz Everson and I'm here to speak in support of the BTU's contract for fair pay. I have been a lifelong Dorchester resident, a BPS parent, and most importantly, a paraprofessional at the Murphy K-8 for the past twenty years. I've spent the last two decades in the heart of the city dedicated to its children, to its future. I've seen them grow, learn, and overcome. I've held their hands, wiped their tears, and celebrated their victories. I've worked alongside dedicated teachers, filling the gaps and providing the individualized attention our students desperately need. I've navigated complex IEPs, implemented specialized strategies, and offered unwavering encouragement. I've seen the power of education transform lives and have been privileged to be a part of that transformation. But here's the stark reality. For twenty years, I've done this work without a fair living wage. I've struggled to make ends meet in a city where the cost of living skyrockets while our salaries remain stagnant. I've worked second jobs, sacrificed family and personal time, and worried about how to pay for basic necessities for my children. Boston, a city of innovation and progress, often forgets those who are the backbone of its educational system. Paraprofessionals, the unsung heroes, are essential to student success. Yet we are undervalued, underpaid, and often overlooked. We are not asking for riches, we are asking for respect. We are asking for a wage that reflects the value of our work. We are asking for a wage that reflects the value of our work, a wage that allows us to live with dignity in the city we serve. We are asking for a fair chance to build a stable life, to provide for our families, and to continue the commitment for our Boston children. We are not just employees, we are partners in education. We are invested in the success of our students and the future of our city. We deserve a living wage, not just for ourselves, but for the sake of the children we serve. Because when we are supported, they are supported. When we thrive, they thrive. It's time to pay paraprofessionals a respectable living wage. I'd hate to leave a city I love and have called home for 40 years because I can no longer afford to live here and send my children to BPS. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Christine Stegman.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You can start. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the school committee. My name is Kristin Stegman. I'm a lifelong resident of Brighton. My daughter is a current eighth-grade student at the Mary Lion. I also have a niece in the eighth grade and a niece in the sixth grade at the Mary Lion. Two, my two sons have graduated and two nephews have also graduated from the Mary Lion, and all are either in college or have graduated from college. I'm also the president of the Friends of the Mary Lion Board and co-president for both the high school board and the lower school board. I'm here to speak in opposition in the closing and reconfiguration of the Mary Lion. How can you close the doors on the program that started inclusion? Our staff and headmaster, Dr. Irvea No, has worked extremely hard, day in and day out, to teach and guard our students and our program. Our teachers are fully invested in all of our students' lives, both regular ed and special ed. Our building might not have all of the shiny bells and whistles and a gymnasium and an auditorium that all the new schools have, but it has something different. It has staff that care, a headmaster that can walk through the halls and name every student, and families that choose to send our children to the school on a daily basis. The Mary Lion is hope and home to these students. Students, staff, and families continue to work hard to fight for the Mary Lion. Our school may be small, but it is mighty. Our school creates an inclusive learning environment that helps all students learn to develop and work to their potential. Please keep our students in the school where they feel safe to be who they are, their home at the Mary Lion. I urge you to reconsider and to keep our school open. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our last speaker is Deidra Manning.
Um, it says I can't start my video because the host has disabled it.
Just a second.
Oh yeah, sorry. Thank you, everybody. Um, I, I also wanted to echo the sentiments that Chair Robinson made earlier about Mayor Wu's performance today, um, before the congressional hearing. It's great, the sense of humanity that she has, that everybody who lives in the city belongs. I also would like to echo the sentiments that I've heard the superintendent herself say when talking about the increase in enrollment that came from immigrant students. It puzzles me that there's such a disconnect, that there's welcoming for some folks, but for the construct of the exam school policy that is targeting students for inclusion, exclusion, excuse me, from certain parts of the city is to me really troubling. Um, and it sort of just speaks to the lack of a customer service mentality or stakeholder mentality that I see in BPS and I hear echoed in all the comments of people who've spoken in the many school committee meetings that I've participated in. I sort of see the implosion of the Henderson as a microcosm of what's happening with BPS in terms of reduction in enrollment. The, the district doesn't listen when problems with security and problems with certain students, that it all ends up happening, that a 16-year-old girl assaults a principal, knocks her unconscious, and then people immediately started to leave. And then dribs and drabs over that year. I didn't end up pulling my daughter until three years later, but the school literally lost all the people who had options. I felt that I needed to stay, um, because I felt if I were fighting for the school, that the kids who didn't have choices, the kids with cognitive issues, et cetera. I, I just don't understand why BPS is not looking to serve the people in the city, all of the people in the city. Please do something about all of the problems that people are mentioning, and, and please don't exclude students from exam schools. I, I just, it, it just doesn't make sense. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Chair, that concludes public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Parvex, and I want to thank everyone who spoke tonight. Your input is critical as we consider the superintendent's budget recommendations for this next fiscal year. I want to remind you that you can view all of the budget documents and share your feedback by visiting bostonpublicschools.org/budget. You can also email your comments to the school committee. Our final virtual budget hearing will take place on Wednesday, March 20th at 5:30 PM, followed by a school committee meeting at 6:30 PM. The committee will vote on the superintendent's final fiscal year 26 budget recommendation on March 26. If there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Parvex, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
Ms. Christian Anders, Ms. Lima Barbosa?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia, Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
We are adjourned.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.